This meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:32 PM Tuesday, September 15th, 2020 in room 137 of the Edison Building. Present is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools and a non-voting ex officio member of the board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, the Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Amundson.
Here.
Mr. Barlow.
Here.
Ms. Marvin.
Here.
Ms. Nathan.
Here.
Ms. Slusner.
Here.
Chair Seelinger.
Here.
Ms. Workman.
Here.
Thank you.
2.01, Approval of the Agenda. Superintendent Munoz.
Yes, there are two changes to the agenda. Item 7.09, Approval of Revision to the Policy Procedure Manual has been added, and item 7.05, Purchase of Thermal Scanners, has been removed.
Move approval. Marvin.
Second. Slusner.
Ms. Amundson.
Aye.
Mr. Barlow.
Aye.
Ms. Marvin.
Aye.
Ms. Nathan.
Aye.
Mr. Slusner.
Aye.
Chair Seelinger.
Aye.
Ms. Workman.
Aye.
Thank you.
Three, Announcements and Communications. 3.01, Elementary and Middle School Design Team. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, tonight we'd like to recognize those individuals who served on both our elementary and middle school design teams, so I'd like to share my screen here. I'm not going to read through all the names, but leave it up here a little bit. These are all the individuals who participated in the elementary design of all three elementary buildings. You can see a good representation across the district, and individuals that were not part of the staff, but also some of the members of our facility task force as well. So there's the elementary team, and then these are the individuals that served from the middle school design team. At this time, we'd really like to thank all of them for their commitment to the district and for the time that they put in to provide input and feedback on the design of our three new elementaries and one new middle school. So we thought tonight we would just like to take a few minutes here just to recognize them and thank them for all of their time and commitment that they gave to the district.
Thank you, Superintendent, and thank you to the design teams. We have seen your work begin to come to life and can't wait to see it in real life, so thank you. 3.02, COVID Update. Superintendent.
Yes, tonight for our COVID update, I'm going to introduce Brent, the principal at John Adams Middle School, and I'll let him introduce two of the teachers, but we thought we would share again, two teachers share what they're doing during our distance learning at the secondary level. So Brent, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, I'm very excited to share with all of you guys what's happening. If you don't know, we had a remodel of the second floor and lighting throughout the building. It's very exciting, a fresh look at John Adams, but also a time to reflect on what we're doing as a school as we're celebrating 50 years. So what better way than having three John Adams alumni come and present to you? One is the principal, not going to tell you when I went to school there, but it's the eighties. And also, we have Matt Bits, one of our sixth grade teachers, and me, Ian Nats as well, and they're going to share some of the great things that we're doing.
All right, I'll take it over since I don't hear Ian right now. I'd just like to first be thankful that I'm a part of the JA team. I really think we are a team and we're molding as a full staff, really with doing our best to build relationships with our students here at the beginning of distance learning. Then I am also the sixth grade highly gifted English teacher and pre-algebra teacher. So my collaboration with Monica Bowler and Lindsay Walsh and the ELA team and the math team there. But overall, really what we're trying to do is we're not only trying to build relationships, but we're trying to expand our students' thinking with them really understanding their why and how they are learning things, and we're doing that in multiple ways, their Newzella and Pairdeck and Google Apps and CSO and working with each other and independently and with us as teachers. And I'm just proud to be a part of the JA community team, and I look forward to doing our best, be the best middle school we can be in Minnesota.
Awesome. So I'll follow it up. Again, my name's Ian Nats. I'm an eighth grade social studies teacher at John Adams. I've been there for the past seven years, and just like Mr. Bits and Mr. Gates, I'm also an alumni. Went to John Adams, went to John Marshall. So the big thing for me is just bringing something back to my school that, I mean, they did a lot of great things for me growing up. So I think a big positive that we've brought to John Adams the past year or two has been our Second Step program. So we kind of looked at our advisory and we're kind of seeing how, you know, we're having some issues just kind of with students not really feeling like it's a community. And I know that's such a big deal, especially at the middle school level, and especially for, you know, especially for our students of color, finding that community can be really hard. And so I think our step, our Second Step program, which like I said, if we're teaching in advisory, focuses mostly on, excuse me, it's a social emotional learning and, you know, how to cope through when things are tough, how to deal with situations where, you know, you know, your friends are coming at you or something, or teachers. And, you know, I think that's, we've been able to see a positive, a positive change in our building from last year. And I think as we start with year two and Second Step, I think, and onto year three and when we're able to meet in person, I think we're going to be able to really see that instead of just a, you know, school, John Adams is going to be more of a community. Because at the end of the day, I mean, we're basically a second home for a lot of our kids and our students. And so I think, like I said, Second Step and the other programs that we're utilizing during distance learning with Pairdeck and GIMKIT and other things like that, I think we can really bring that community aspect back to John Adams and be the best school that we can. And especially for me as an eighth grade teacher, I mean, my goal and my job is to get my eighth graders ready for high school, and I think with the steps that we've taken, I think we'll be able to do that much better.
Thanks for sharing, guys. Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, thank you for this opportunity.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Any, can you guys hang on just a little bit, just in case there was any questions for more members?
They're running, they're running away from us, Superintendent. No, I will start just by saying thank you. I'll get you in a second, Don, we're a little delayed. Thank you so much for being middle school teachers. There's a special place in the world for you and that you care so much about our kids and talk about community and relationships. That's amazing, and that's what we want to hear. Director Barlow and then Director Nathan.
Yes, thank you. Two quick things. I believe it was Matt, are you the sixth grade English teacher, highly gifted?
Yes, I'm the sixth grade highly gifted English and pre-algebra for sixth graders.
Okay, so just a quick question, you know, how is that working for you and the students there? I know oftentimes people want to go, no secret, to Fridell to take advantage of the highly gifted program, and I'll get to the community aspect with Ian in a moment, but how's that working? How could you calibrate the enthusiasm of staff, students, and the end result? Could you speak to that for a moment?
Yeah, no problem. So first, if I just think about our staff, my staff was super excited. It was just last Friday, our science teacher, Deb Lass, had an opportunity for students to join a STEM program, and I made sure that my families and my students really knew that, and over half of them took advantage, I think it was close to three fourths, took advantage of that to get into the STEM program. And Ms. Lass made sure that everyone in the staff knew that, and then everyone's kind of been complimenting how the attendance has increased across the board at John Adams, as well with the highly gifted students. And then I just think we have a lot of enthusiasm with our class, highly gifted in English and pre-algebra, mainly because I'm putting a lot of work on them to challenge them where I don't think they were challenged a lot in elementary school, and I'm doing everything I can based on what I learned in the gifted and talented strategic case course from Monica Bowler and my previous schoolings and just working with both my teams that I worked with at John Adams to make it the best for them, to keep them engaged and to challenge them every single day.
Thank you. And Ian, if you don't mind, you made reference to the Second Step program, but more important to me was the building of relationships and a sense of community you, you're working and staff are working to achieve amongst the JM community. And while JM is a large middle school, I have heard, and we oftentimes hear about the values of small middle schools and the magic that happens there, can you maybe speak to the magic that happens in a large middle school where you're building a sense of community, valuing input, and honoring student voice? Can you speak to that briefly, please?
Absolutely. So, I mean, I've only, I've seen John Adams, and that's, that's my experience. And the thing about, the magic about John Adams is that, man, you're going to get so many perspectives and diversity at a school like John Adams. We have kids that are from communities that are Sudanese, Mong, Cambodian, Laotian, Somali, and so many other communities that I, you're just not going to see at a small school. And especially, you know, you know, it's begin, the beginning of the school year, and so I haven't been able to see really my students unfold, but again, I've been at John Adams for the past six years, this will be my seventh, and seeing just the ideas and the, and the thought process and like when we have discussions and having them open up their minds and getting so many different perspectives, I think that's really the magic of John Adams is the diversity that we have and the kids being able to see that there are going to be kids that are not like me, so I can learn from them. And I, and the thing about JA and, you know, John Adams, for some reason, there's this bad reputation, and I, and I really, I guess I really disagree with that reputation. I would, if anything, invite any community members to come to my classroom or to come to any classrooms at John Adams to see really what we're doing, but there is a magic there that you're just not going to get at a smaller school because we have so much to offer to these kids that sometimes they don't, people just don't realize. We have after-school programs, we have programs like Deb Lass and Mr., or Bits mentioned that Mrs. Lass has been incorporating, and she was one of my former teachers. And so being able to see kind of, again, my former teachers and new teachers that have come into the building kind of bring their educational flair and their, we have one teacher, Ms. Brunskill, who's bringing, who's started a gardening club for students, for those who are interested in gardening. And so there's just a lot of opportunities that we have at John Adams that people just really don't know about. And I, again, like I said, I would challenge any community members to come to our classrooms and see that because that, I think that's the really beautiful thing about us, is that we have so much perspective and so much diversity that you're not going to get at another school like us.
Thank you.
Director Nathan.
Well, thank you all for coming with your enthusiasm and, and your stories. I think part of the frustrating part for parents and community members with us being out of the buildings is that people can't come into the buildings right now and engage directly with you and, and see the smiles and the enthusiasm on your faces. So this is a great opportunity. So I have two questions. First of all, what's your biggest challenge that you found so far in distance learning? And is there anything that you've discovered already, any innovation or any way of handling things that you're thinking, huh, we're going to bring this back to the classroom with us when we get back in person?
I can, I can definitely speak to at least a challenge where internet connection throughout with, whether it's us as a staff or them as students, sometimes they definitely have that as a reason for why they cannot accomplish things or why we can't accomplish things. That'd be probably the biggest thing to work on or the biggest thing to make sure is possible. I think another one is just really what are the requirements? What do we really expect out of them throughout our full 85-minute block? Because I think in the long run, they need time to work together, they need time to learn from us, they need time to learn by themselves, and then there's times where they think they can leave after a half an hour or after an hour, or, oh, I have this I have to do. Well, you have to start thinking, would you have done that in class? Well, you're not going to do that in class, but because you're at home or where you are, they think they can just go do something extra. An innovation I really have is I do think these students are smarter than we really give them credit for. They are learning a lot by themselves, independently through distance learning here, even at the beginning of the year. So building more of a flipped classroom in my room, I definitely see as a high possibility moving forward, where they're able to learn with me by themselves before they actually get to school or after school to get continuous learning, differentiated learning as well. I'm a big fan, I definitely see a flipped classroom, some sort of a model happening.
And just to go off of what, what Matt said, definitely agree with the flipped classroom aspect. I think that's been a really, and that our, we have to give our credit where credit's due to our students. Some of our students are really excelling, and that has been really cool to kind of see them kind of be independent learners. Again, especially I teach eighth grade, so that's my biggest thing is I want to create independent learners because when you got into high school, you know, I'm not going to be there and your teachers are not going to be there to always hold your hands to kind of help you out. So I think this is a positive, pushing kids to have to kind of take their education, and it's on them because we're not there, we're not sitting right next to them to be able to do that work or to ask questions or things like that. So I think the independent learning piece is such a huge thing right now. And to, and like I said, to give them credit, I mean, distance learning, we're basi, it's kind of unfair because we're basically asking them to be like basically freshman college students doing online classes because that's essentially what distance learning is. And so like I said, like, like Bit said, we got to give these kids credit for being able to do that because, man, that would be, I know if I was 13 right now, this would be really tough for me. So a lot, I'm, a lot of kids are doing awesome with that. I know Bits also talked about Pairdeck. I think that's been a great, great resource. I actually just used that the last two days for the very first time. And if you're not really familiar with Pairdeck, Pairdeck is an application that fits right with Google Slides, and it's a kind of an add-on that allows you to basically make every slide in your PowerPoint an interactive piece. So you can have students either pick answers or they can type questions or, you know, do a matching exercise or activity, and that's been, I think that's a really cool interactive piece that I think I'm definitely going to start bringing back to my classroom when we go back to in person. One thing that I am seeing an issue though with, especially during distance learning, is Apple products, so iPads. The iPads are just not able to connect with our Google software very well. I'm having a lot of students that have especially Apple, like iPads or even their iPhones. You know, Google Slides doesn't work as well, they're having more issues with like Google Classroom compared to students that might have like a laptop or a computer where everything works seamlessly. It's, it's like Apple and Google just aren't really meshing right now, and I think that's been a real big struggle. And then when they have technological issues, you know, it's really, it takes almost a day or two in order to fix them unless, unless they can share it on their screen right away from you to help them.
Okay, Director Marvin, final comments and questions?
Yes. First of all, Ian, I hope that Apple doesn't come after you with a lawsuit or something. I don't think they will. But I appreciate all of you talking about the technology and the programs that you're using. I have no idea what you're talking about, and it doesn't matter because you know what you're doing. The thing that just gets to my heart, and I've had some experience in the classroom, including teaching at John Adams, is when you're talking about community and relationships and magic, it's about what you're doing. It's not about the way the building is, it's about the people in the building. And I just, I can't thank you enough, all three of you and the rest of you in that building and all of our buildings. Middle school is challenging, and I just so appreciate that you are the ones that are so passionate about those kids and about making that experience so meaningful and those relationships so meaningful. So please keep on doing what you're doing, and thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Could I say one thing? I want to thank all of you for coming tonight. A special thanks there to Matt. He's stepped out on his break from his second job just to be part of this meeting, so thanks for doing that, and we appreciate the information you provided.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, have a great night.
Yeah, thank you for this opportunity, letting us speak.
Yep, thank you.
We love it. That's awesome. Thanks, Superintendent, for bringing them forward. We, we love to see the classroom teachers and principals. 3.03, School Board Committee Assignment Updates. Would anyone like to start with an update? Surely someone has an update. Thank you, Director Marvin. Go ahead.
Yes, the Family and Community Engagement Committee met this morning, and it's always a pleasure to meet with people who are connected with our families and who know what's going on. One, couple of things that were, I think, of the many things that were shared, Regan Clover, who's our Native American Specialist Coordinator in the district, has established a relationship now between the Rochester Public Schools and the Winona Public Schools so that our native families from both of those are able to communicate and work together. And there was something else that I can't remember. Oh, well, Denise Moody also shared with others that this is a tough time for our families, for every family, whether their children are at school or at home, and she talked about the kind of mental health resources that are available. And Melissa Brandt, who coordinates the entire program for family engagement, suggested that parents who are struggling, whether it's with mental health issues in their family or if it's with tech issues or distance learning, whatever it is, contact your building first. And that they are, they're working hard with so many different organizations across our district, not-for-profits, churches, businesses, because we know that families are stressed, they are frustrated, and our district is working really hard to pull together resources to help people, but your first call should be to your, to the school that your children attend.
Thank you, Director Marvin. Director Workman, you're next.
Yes, I attended virtually the AMSD meeting on this past Friday, and the bulk of the meeting was taken up with a presentation of the Morris Leatherman Survey. Apparently, this firm does a statewide and metro area survey with no charge to AMSD each year. I remember a couple of years ago, I asked about, you know, how does Rochester fit into this because it was, you know, we were either talking about the entire state or just the metro area. And the response then was that there were only about maybe 100 people who were actually surveyed in Rochester, and he felt that that would not really give us a good statistical sampling. So I won't go into all of those details, so you can thank me for that. There's also on the AMSD website, there is a legislative platform survey summary, and the three top policy items of concern were for the legislature to allow boards to approve existing and new referendum. Safe schools, mental health funding was another big one, and increased teachers of color was the third one. So those were the top three. Additional topics were for local control to, to design a learning around the needs of our learners. And I know Mike has spoken of this several times, something that our district does not do, which is to, we do not drive into another district to pick up students. And so there was a, a concern about, they want the legislature to limit transportation for open enrolled students, where districts could not engage in that. And then another one concerning open enrollment was restricting it to, to moves that foster more economic diversity in the two districts. Funding issue, the top one, again, for I don't know how many years in a row now, is the special education cross-subsidy funding. And another topic under funding was the continued funding of pre-K programs. So those are just the whole, the highlights. There were probably about 50 things on this list, so I just picked out the ones that I thought were the most important to the organization as a whole.
Thank you. Director Amundson.
I wanted to report on Rochester Public School Foundation and the status of the board member assigned to them as a, as a liaison. For, I think, as, as long as RPSF has existed, a board member has sat on the Board of Directors, but at the request of the school board, Rochester Public School Foundation amended their bylaws to remove that requirement that there be a school board member sitting on the board. I, I would reiterate that, of course, individual school board members are welcome to apply to be on the Board of Directors as independent volunteers, as I am. It's a wonderful organization, as two of the past presidents also sit on the board with me. So I just wanted to, to report that, but they are still grateful for the linkage to the school board through formal committee assignment.
Thank you. Director Nathan.
I just wanted to add something to Director Marvin's report on the Family Engagement Committee. Parents should watch their district communications for an opportunity that's coming up on September 24th at 5:30 PM. Melissa Brandt, who is leading our family engagement work, is going to have a parent online virtual opportunity to learn about some of the family engagement activities that we talk about at our daytime meetings, but also to give parents a chance to ask questions or, or discuss issues. So she's hoping to make that a regular Thursday night event, and so communication should be coming out on that soon, but it's a save the date.
Thank you. I'll step in before Director Slusner. I attended government forums on Monday morning. Just a few things of note, the city is looking at, my number here that I wrote down was 98 million in budget cuts next year, so they're talking about keeping other rates flat, no increases for parking, et cetera. So we know that they have, have suffered some financial issues due to COVID, as we have. Olmsted County, the same, they're looking at a 0% levy next year, and they already have a hiring freeze. Bulk of the discussion from our state legislators was about the bonding bill and special sessions. And DMC is in the middle of a five-year update. So yes, DMC has been around five years, folks, if you can believe it, and so they are working on that, and I'll leave it there. Director Slusner.
Two things. So from a community point of view, we'll have a couple exciting updates later today on our meeting, so I'll leave those discussions for that. And then a question for Director Amundson. For the Public School Foundation, since we're not having Boo Fest this year, was there any discussion of alternate ways for the community to help support the Public School Foundation?
Thanks. Discussion is ongoing regarding what RPSF looks like in a COVID world. The grant cycle is also suspended because many of the grants that we had given out during, at the beginning of second semester when things looked normal, were then not able to be completed. And, you know, And you know, that's, that's unfortunate in, in numerous ways. And quite frankly, many of the um, grant proposals that come before the foundation uh, are very dependent on what format our district would be in at the time. Are they in-person? Are they hybrid? Are they distance? And, and quite frankly, some of them would not be. So a, a, at the, at the current time, the board is sort of at a loss um, to know how to move forward. And there was some discussion about um, whether or not a special COVID project fund be put up, but without something like Boo Fest, um, bringing in the money, it's kind of hard to give out money that we aren't bringing in. So then there was discussion about whether we wanted to have a specific fundraiser opened up to community, community members who want to support that kind of special project. But um, without having uh, spoken to staff and administration, um, we weren't able to make that decision because we didn't know if there was a legitimate need. So that all kind of halted. So to get back to your question, Mark. Um, RPSF is always accepting donations um, simply through the website, rpsf.org via PayPal or um, check sent to our mailbox. But um, you know, in, in, in all transparency, uh, there's some question as to uh, what, what we would be doing with those funds right now. They ha, it hasn't been decided. So um, general support is welcome. We continue to um, fund one of the Strive scholarships. So that kind of financial support is always needed as well. But thank you for asking that questions as I switch from my RPSF board member hat to my school board member hat.
You bet. Thanks.
Okay. Thanks all and thanks for uh, that follow-up and I know you will keep us posted, Melissa. Uh, anything else under uh, committee assignments? I'm seeing no hands. I keep changing my screen and then I get kind of lost. So, okay. Nothing. Uh, we will move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items board members want to remove for individual consideration?
I'd like um, individual consideration for 4.06, please.
Okay. Anything else? All right. It will be removed for separate consideration. I'll need a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the balance.
Workman.
Mentioned.
Did you get two, Wendy? Okay. Uh, and Ms. Edgar will call the roll.
Ms. Amundson.
Aye.
Barlow.
Aye.
Ms. Marvin.
Aye.
Ms. Nathan.
Aye.
Schluessner.
Aye.
Chair Seelinger.
Aye.
Ms. Workman.
Aye. Did you hear me? Aye.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Amundson.
Um, I have no. No comments regarding it. I just wanted an individual vote on the item.
Okay. Any other uh, comments on the item? It is already an action item, so I will ask Ms. Edgar. No. I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Marvin.
Second, Schluessner.
Thank you. Now Ms. Edgar can call the roll. Vote.
Okay, Ms. Amundson.
Nay.
Mr. Barlow.
Aye.
Ms. Marvin.
Aye.
Ms. Nathan.
Aye.
Mr. Schluessner.
Aye.
Chair Seelinger.
Aye.
Ms. Workman.
Aye.
Okay. Five, High Student Achievement, 5.01. Back-to-school highlights, Superintendent.
Yes, I have a couple retirements I'd like to acknowledge.
I'm sorry, sorry, sorry.
Uh, first one is Margaret Queasley, uh, reading elementary teacher at the Districtwide. A retirement effective end of the day, August 25th, 2020. Been with the district six years. And then from Community Education, Linda Gregg, early childhood family education teaching assistant at Northrop Community Education Center. Retirement effective the end of the day, June 8th, 2020. She's been with the district thirteen years. We'd like to thank both of those individuals for their service to the district.
Thanks for that. Apologies that I missed it again. Uh, five, High Student Achievement, 5.01. Back-to-school highlights, Superintendent Williams.
Yes, this time I'm going to turn it over to Brenda Witchman, Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
Good evening Chair Seelander and School Board. Thank you for this opportunity to share a little bit about our back-to-school highlights. Um, you can imagine that um, this year planning for back-to-school was um, a little bit different than it has been in the past. Um, just like um, everything else in a, in a pandemic. Um, it was a little bit tricky and we wanted to make sure that we got it right. So I'm going to um, be sharing my screen with you and um, just like the last time, I'm having a hard time with this and I'm not sure why. Hmm.
We're patient. Take your time.
I know and I have it open, so I don't know. Heather, can you rescue me?
Brenda, is there a screen up on the right next to your microphone?
Yes.
I think that one. We'll share it.
Yep, I mean I, I'm at share screen, but when I go, it, it's not showing. I'll just hmm. Well, maybe we'll just go without it because you did have it. I just, I don't want to take your time um, on that. So I'm, I'm going to have to review that. I, it's, it's open on my desktop. I don't know why I can't do it. So um, you can imagine that professional development um, wasn't exactly, thank you so much Heather, what was um, on the foremost of everybody's mind this year. Um, so we just had to be careful in our planning and we had lots of information to consider. We had the teacher focus groups that we did um, in uh, June. We had the back-to-school planning task force and they had a professional development subcommittee, which presented us with a very comprehensive plan. Um, we had guidance from MDE, we had parent feedback, we had staff feedback. And really a challenge was determining like what we needed to know now versus what we needed to know this year. Because we couldn't possibly do it all um, in one setting. So in the morning, uh, both of the, we had two district professional development days and in the morning, um, we had professional learning communities and department meetings. And we decided to do this because one message that was loud and clear in our planning process was that our teachers and all of our certified staff wanted time to meet with their PLCs to plan. So um, the CNI team, we provided the teams with a planning template just to kind of help them be thinking about what are the gaps? Things that kids, you know, missed out on last spring and what are the things that we really need to focus on this year? So um, that was in the morning, both mornings. And then in the afternoon, we had a big choice board and I've listed out uh, on I think four slides, all of the different choices. We put them into four different categories. Um, assessment and feedback, cultural competence, social and emotional learning, instructional strategies, which included technology, and then special education. So um, we knew that a one-size-fits-all approach wasn't going to work because people were at very different places with what they already know and what they wanted to know. And when we're providing professional development, we try to model good teaching practices too. So just like voice and choice works in the classroom with our students, it works with our teachers too. So these sessions, um, some of them were synchronous, some of them were asynchronous. And whenever possible, we did record the sessions and now they're currently on our PD website. Um, teach, uh, the sessions were led by teachers, coaches, related service providers. It was really a team effort and lots of people came forward to share their expertise. And some of them, like uh, you saw from the First Institute, um, we did have probably about ten of them that were recorded sessions of a profession, professional um, presentations that we had access to throughout the summer. So um, then from there, people are filling out a form um, to claim their CEUs. And um, we of course did a survey. So um, we, I think had about five hundred responses to the survey. And um, it was for the most part very positive. Um, when we asked people um, if their PD was helpful and supportive, eighty-one point seven percent said yes. Um, I appreciated having choices. That was ninety-nine point three percent. And um, when asked if the PLC time was useful, um, the response was ninety-six point one percent. And our people want to work together. So we were just really glad that we were able to provide that opportunity for them. And in the open comments, really the most useful sessions um, were the time spent in the PLCs and then everything and anything technology-related. So um, we haven't gone through all of the um, open responses yet, but we are going to be taking a look at the recommendations of the back-to-school professional development task force and um, the survey results to really plan out our professional development for the rest of the year. Um, so we're uh, going to continue to support everybody um, through the curriculum and instruction team, the instructional coaches, asynchronous sessions on our website. And many people commented that they just ran out of time and they didn't have time to view all of the sessions that they wanted. So that's why we recorded them and are making them available. So you know, lessons learned from planning PD in a COVID world. Honestly, there was a lot of positive, I think, that came out of it. We've talked before about, you know, doing sessions and then providing them online for people to view when it worked for them and you know, that was a good thing we were kind of forced to do. Um, but it worked out really well. So um, that was a big takeaway and we will just continue to work and support people. And I'm, we are so proud of all that our teachers are embracing and doing and it's just our job to lift them up and give them the, the time and the support they need. So we will continue um, to support them. So with that, just any questions?
Thanks, Ms. Witchman. Um, I really liked to hear about the day, um, like their PLC time and um, that you're um, looking at the feedback to move forward. I think that's, that's excellent, excellent work there. I think that makes people feel much more invested going forward. Um, Director Nathan.
So hello, um, I um, was really impressed with the variety of offerings that were available and, and was able to watch a few of them, um, both, uh, all a, all asynchronous. Um, but looking at all the options, did you have a sense from the survey on average, how many sessions teachers were able to fit in, you know, over this professional development period? Cause there's a lot of options. And um, and I also know that, you know, i- in a normal year, you have some themes in your professional development that you like to deliver to everyone versus um, you know, concentrating on grade levels. So um, is that, you said you're working on a plan for this year. Are you going to give people time to, I mean, our teachers don't have a lot of free time right now. Is there going to be some set time that maybe they can watch some of these sessions that they missed the first time around in future PD?
I think the buildings will provide for some of that. And you know, like our um, elementary students or elementary teachers with having additional PD time on Wednesdays and stuff. We do hope to um, continue to give people time. And I know that people are accessing it at all times of the day. Um, because I'm, I'm getting emails and stuff from people with feedback. Um, we, you know, we really, we talk about giving our students agency and you know, wanting them to learn. And so instead of us, you know, saying this year, well, everybody's going to learn the same thing. We just said, we can't do that, right? Because everybody's at such a different place with, you know, do they want to learn more about microaggressions or Google Classroom or Paradek? Um, so we really wanted to give our teachers agency, here, here's this big menu and you choose what you need. We really hope that people were engaged in, you know, prob, at least one of those sessions per day. I know people were doing some like surfing too. They'd go into a, a, a link, a Google Classroom and be like, oh, this isn't meeting my needs. I'm going to go into another one. So I think, you know, they probably attended, I'd say each teacher attended two to four. It probably just depends on um, how much time they had. And we really, when you're doing, you know, just sitting in front of a computer and getting, you know, you, you can't expect somebody to sit there for three hours, you know, like we've done in the past. So it was more about, you know, go, you know, learn about this and then maybe take some time to apply it, to learn about it. Like if you're trying to, you, you know, do class link or something, you know, learn about it and then go take some time to actually do it, apply it.
Thank you. Andy, I don't see any of their hands raised, so I am thinking that we are, we are good with that. So thank you for being here. Um, thanks for all your work. Okay, now we are up to Safe and Welcoming Learning Environment, 6.01. Approval of the Equity Belief Statement. Uh, this is a briefing item of the school board. I am turning it over, I believe, and she popped up on my screen, so I'm turning it over to Director Nathan. I hope it's you who are, is going to be talking.
That is correct. Thank you. So at the uh, the last school board meeting, we um, introduced these um, equity belief statements um, in our policy committee report. Tonight, we bring it as a briefing item to have the opportunity to discuss it. And if there are any recommended changes, we can discuss them tonight. Um, I uh, they're available on board docs. I don't think we need to read them through again because we did that last week. But I do want to um, bring up that we did receive a recommendation for some language modification. Uh, the policy committee did and the policy committee discussed it. And then we would like to bring it forward as a recommended change this evening. So it is to um, one, two, three, four, five. Uh, the seventh item down, currently it reads, "We believe every student and staff have the right to be addressed by a name and pronouns that correspond to their preferred or expressed gender identity. And we would like to replace that language with, 'We believe that one's gender and sexuality are important parts of one's identity, which deserve to be genuinely accepted and valued. We believe that every student and staff member has the right to grow in a safe space and to be addressed by their preferred name and by pronouns which correspond to their gender identity.'" So that's what we have on the table right now.
Uh, any question?
Um, let me, let me also say, as far as other comments, um, the policy committee only received one other uh, comment from a, a constituent on an email and it was just a clarification between the difference between this and our welcoming statement that we talked about last year. Um, other than that, we received no other emails um, on suggested changes or comments.
Thank you. Uh, questions or comments, board members? Ms. Workman.
Yes, so this is just a process question then. Um, so do we um, put that into the um, statement tonight to be approved at the next meeting? Since this is a briefing item?
Yeah, that's probably fine. Director Barlow, did you have something?
Uh, yes, I did. Uh, two quick questions. One, um, so these, and I think Equity Core Belief Statement. One, so these, and I think Equity Core Belief Statements are important. And I'm not suggesting there's a placement out of the cart before the horse, but we're still awaiting the equity policy. And I'd like to maybe have some understanding how these two, how they relate, if you will, or how they will be incorporated or support each other. And then finally, intent, the issue associated with equity, I'm just using the issue broadly, much like, if you will, affirmative action of long ago, there, there was a intended audience, if you will, or a recognition of those who were being impacted. And also even in terms of this particular district, how we have historically used the term equity and in reference to particular, well, let me be specific, equity as relates to BIPOC. And, and, and so I, I just find it, I'm not saying right or wrong, but I, I just find it interesting that we are having this conversation at this point when I'm wondering if it is something which could have been included in existing policies, be it dealing with harassment, things such as that there. I don't know. I'm just asking for the committee to consider and potentially respond back to.
Okay, so I hear, I hear Director Barlow asking about how this fits or works with the equity policy that the Policy Committee is working on. So let's start, let's start with hearing about that. And then if we need some clarifying questions from Director Barlow, we can go back. So I will, I'm going to mute and the Policy Committee can decide who is going to respond.
Thank you. And Director Nathan, it's a good question. It's one we've absolutely discussed at length. So why don't you take that?
So very similar to the way we have core beliefs as part of our strategic plan, these are the core beliefs related to equity. And those core beliefs in our strategic plan are implemented through, in, in some part, our policy. So in the case of these equity beliefs, these set the foundation for the areas in which we believe action needs to be taken. And then the policies will lay out the how that action is to be taken and then can be enforced through the use of our policy process. So we look very carefully at the structure of other policies that other districts have done with equity policies. And in many cases, they had, the, they, they tried to separate the action, which is the policy piece, the how, from the what, which is what we consider to be in the Equity Belief Statements. So this sets our philosophy and the poli, the equity policy will set the action steps.
Does that help Director Barlow?
I really hadn't planned a follow-up.
Okay, that's fine. Just wanted to make sure.
Offered, I'm sorry, an explanation was offered. I might further have or inquire since the reference was made to viewing other districts. What about the MSBA? Have they, were, were there any referencing or outreach occurring in terms of the state governing body that offers model policy recommendations and/or, if you will, belief statement recommendations?
I can, I can take that. MSBA, MSBA does not have a model equity policy. So we, we looked to other models from Minnesota. We looked to other models from other states. We also ran it by the people that we're working with, with the Midwest and Plains Equity Center because they have worked with a lot of districts in developing equity policies. And they, I mean, they had a lot of good things to say about our process, in addition to all the community feedback that we got through the work of Savannah Talbert reaching out to the employees of color and the students of color, et cetera.
All right, thank you. So we have our belief statement as a briefing item before us. We have had a replacement language put in. Any other questions or comments? Melissa, thank you for coming back.
I wanted to go back to Director Workman's questions. So Director Workman, you were asking whether or not the edit should be made in the Board Doc item so that it's accurate when it comes better, up to date, most, most current when it comes back at the next meeting?
Correct.
And what was the answer?
I didn't get one. Or at least that.
If you're able to put the edit in now on the current agenda, then we'd have it on record for people who wanted to submit comments in the, in the next two weeks. Is that the point of the question?
I, I agree with that because we don't have that in front of us in written form right now. Kathy just read it to us. Kathy, did you read it to us or was that Jean? Oh, it's Kathy. Please say it was you, even if it wasn't. Yeah, so I think that needs to be in there in written form, maybe with here's a suggested edit or words to that effect so that everybody knows what we've been considering and talking about.
What about an additional attachment upload, which is revision wording? So people can see the original and the revision. And it's there for people who want to go and see it in its written form. And that way we wouldn't be changing history.
What can I add?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Go ahead, Kathy.
Director Seelinger, so at some point, the language of the resolution, which currently includes, well, the resolution approves whatever the language is in the equity statement. So is it better for us as a board tonight to reach just consensus that we would change the language to include the recommended change from the Policy Committee? And then the resolution next week would say, here's the current version of the document and this is what we're approving?
From what I understand, Ms. Edgar has already put the new language in the document? So if you, if the screen is refreshed, it would indicate the updated language?
Is the old language still there? As Melissa was asking to make a comparison? No.
Well, and, and it seems to me that the intent of these statements has not changed. The wording of one statement has slightly, but beyond that, what the intent is, is to enforce the idea that this school district is absolutely dedicated to, I was shocked, I think I just, I just got lost. I don't know if you can still hear me? No? Am I bad? Sorry.
We're all shaking our heads yes, Jean. Can you hear us?
If I, if I could note, I refreshed and I see the wording has changed on the agenda item on Board Docs, but the attachment hasn't changed. So maybe that's a good way to say, here's the old, here's the new for those who are interested in commenting.
Okay, Jean, you know, we can hear you. Can you hear us?
I can hear you. I just got a new modem today. This is making me crazy because it keeps telling me that I'm gone wherever. But I'm about at the point now, okay, this has been through an extensive review by a number of communities in our community. And I'm at the point where I think we've got it right. And I would like this board to move this to action. I would like to move this to action.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to move this to action. So now we're voting on moving this to action? Is that correct? And Ms. Edgar is going to take the role on that.
Okay, Ms. Amundson?
Aye.
Mr. Barlow? Ms. Marvin?
Aye.
Mr. Schussner?
Aye.
Chair Seelinger?
Aye.
Ms. Workman?
Aye.
It's now an action item.
It's now an action item. Let me read the resolution.
You haven't read the resolution yet, Wendy?
I can hear you, Wendy. Sorry, folks. Okay. Are you muted now, Wendy? Okay. It is now an action item. I'm going to read the resolution and then we're going to have discussion and then we're going to vote. Is that correct? I'm looking, I've got my side eye on Wendy because I see that Julie's anxious, but I have to read the resolution. Okay. Whereas the Independent School District 535 is committed to ensuring that school is a safe and welcoming place for all students, it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 approve the Equity Belief Statements. Okay, now discussion, correct? Okay, discussion. Ms. Workman?
Yes, I just wanted to make the point that this is a statement. It is not a policy, so it does not have to sit any longer. And so it's perfectly appropriate for us to move this to action tonight. I just wanted to make that clarification.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Director Barlow?
Yes. And I agree with Director Workman. Yet I think that is the problem when the goal, my words, the goal is to make a statement. Now, I'm not accusing anyone of that, but we have to do more than just make statements, if you will. I believe the community, we have reached out to some aspects of the community. We really can't say we reached out to the community as a whole. I would suggest that, you know, there probably are a good number of people of faith who would probably like the opportunity to offer comment, thought, reflection, not on the concept of equity, but perhaps the, the language asked it, well, maybe the why and the how come and maybe even clarifying, well, I thought equity was about, just simply suggesting that I don't understand the rush, if you will. It does make a statement. And I think we've made too many statements. And I'm ready for us to be more thoughtful, more deliberate and more purposeful in what we do. And that's why I inquired earlier about the policy. And, but I will always, you know, vote my, my conscience as I believe we each are called to do. And so I anxiously await the opportunity to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Barlow. Superintendent?
Yes, I'd just like to make a couple of comments. First, back to one of Don's previous questions, I think we do have, currently have policy that makes a general equity statement. I think this goes a much deeper and more specific. But I think then to your second point, Don, about a statement, I think core beliefs or core values are not designed to make a statement, but they're to say, this is how we will do business. All of our decisions, all of our actions will keep that, all of those beliefs in mind when we do that. It's, it can't be just a statement because then it's just words on a piece of paper. But if we commit to these, then we as a system, by system, that means every employee in our school, the board, everybody, the superintendent, that when we make decisions or make actions, we have to follow those core beliefs or core values.
Thank you. Director Marvin?
Yeah, Superintendent Munoz, I think that's exactly right. And down to your point, this is what will underlie our policy. Our policy is the thing that has some teeth. And we're working on this. And hopefully we'll have a policy to present to the board in the very near future. But you're exactly right. It's not enough to just say, this is who we are, this is what we believe. We need to do that. And I, I think in a number of regards, we're doing that now, but we need to make sure that we are very specific. That's what the policy is going to be in terms of exactly how we are going to move forward regarding equity.
Okay, any other comments, board members? Otherwise, I will ask Ms. Edgar to call, well, she's not calling the role, she's calling the, what do I call it? Calling the roll call?
Do we have to, do we have to move approval first?
You already did, Ms. Marvin and Ms. Workman, Ms. Workman and Ms. Marvin.
Seeing no other questions? Ms. Edgar?
Ms. Amundson?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Marvin?
Aye.
Ms. Nathan?
Aye.
Mr. Schussner?
Aye.
Chair Seelinger?
Aye.
Ms. Workman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, folks. Seven, Efficient and Effective Operations, 7.01, Rochester Public Schools Building Update Information. Superintendent Munoz, bring on the team.
Yes, at this time I'm going to turn it over to Scott Sheridan, Executive Director of Operations, Jason Woodhouse from CRW, Kevin Holm from LHB, David Booth from LHB, and Keenan McWaters from Knutson Construction. Scott?
Good evening, board members. This is the eighth referendum update. So we've been at this at least eight months now. Where we're at construction wise, the construction is completed at eight secure entries that we plan to do this summer. We still have four more to do next summer. And the auditorium project is pretty much complete at the three high schools. And the rest of the referendum projects such as the pool, the emergency notification systems are still in design. And we plan to get those completed next year. And so this update, like I said, provides you what we've done so far. And tonight, I would And tonight, unfortunately, Jason's not going to be with us, but Kevin is with us. And I also provided you an executive summary from Knutson Construction. So if you have questions about any of that, we can ask Keenan. But otherwise, we're going to let Kevin dominate tonight because he's going to be talking about the design development drawing set for the middle school. And Kevin, are you there? We can turn it over to you.
All right, I am here. I will start right off by sharing the screen. If everybody can just confirm that you can see the screen?
Yes.
Yep.
Great. As Scott indicated, this is the design development presentation of the middle school. So we have already gone through this process with the 2019 elementary at Schmidt Park. So this is the second phase of design. Coincidentally, two years, two days ago, we submitted the structural package. And in just a bit, you'll be actually approving the site package for bids. So this project, in order to make sure we were able to get it into the ground as soon as possible and keep the 2022 opening date, we have three bid packages total. The first one being the site, which is tonight. The next one being structural package. And then the final one being the mechanical, electrical, and architectural package. So agenda for today is basically go through the, where the building sits. We have some images and some animations. And then we'll talk a little bit about schedule. Feel free to jump in at any time with questions. This slide again is just a reminder of where we were or where we started from with the different design groups and building influence groups that we had within the district. And so again, just looking at some of the important words or concepts that came out of those initial goal-setting exercises. This is a rendered site plan. There have been some modifications since this, but this is very close to the final design that was bid out and that you'll be approving tonight with the multipurpose practice field and softball field on the far east side, the right-hand side of the picture, with the bus drop-off on that right side. The building kind of centered within the lot itself to account for the grades and the contours that are there, with the parent drop-off on the south side and then the service drive on the northwest corner or west side of the building. So again, all those roads and pavements have multiple purposes. Not, not one, including that of fire suppression and fire safety, emergency safety access to the, to the backside and north side of the building. So those are some of the key elements that tie into why there is as much pavement and how it's distributed. Also, again, making sure that we keep the bus traffic and the parent traffic separate to reduce conflict and, and possibility of accidents. So again, when we talk about this building, we always start off with the main level. So the bottom or the south side of this image is the main entry off of the parent drop-off, which is the middle level, which we are calling main. So at this level, you have the main office, which is the brown area in the bottom right-hand corner. You have the auditorium, which is the turquoise color in the middle. And then the pinkish-purple color are the music rooms. As you head north, you have the main hallway going into the cafeteria with the classroom wings being split by the cafeteria. So we're actually able to have six individual education areas, we'll call it, that have a group learn, two small group rooms, and then somewhere between five and seven classrooms that surround that. We do have six different locker bays, so about 200 lockers per locker bay, split up between the three floors. This image portrays the building at the lower level. So if we were to go down one set of steps, we would be at this level. This also happens to be the bus entry and exit. So any students that are riding the bus would be coming in from the east side or the right-hand side. The main doors being just north of the gyms, which are the three large blue boxes centered in the, in the image. The gray area to the south indicates that that area is unexcavated. So that is basically earth. You can see there's a little bit darker shaded gray area just next to the gyms. That is a mechanical room with ventilation units that serve a portion of the building. You'll also see on this plan, the gold or mustard color at the top in the middle. That is your media center with associated classroom-type spaces and a variety of types of seating for students to engage in the space. Now we've gone up two floors. So now we are on the top floor of the building. This is predominantly just the education portion. Again, you can see the two wings on the right and left-hand side. The gray boxes in the middle on the southern side are again air handling rooms where the air handling units exist. I will say, just kind of a preface to the ventilation system in all four of the buildings that you're getting. LHB started a process about 20 years ago. We adopted a ventilation system coming from Europe that is called thermal displacement ventilation. The intent of that system was to provide a higher level of CO2, or excuse me, a lower level of CO2, higher level of oxygen within the classrooms, and reduce the spread of the common flu by having a stratification of air and 100% fresh air. With our current scenario with COVID and the pandemic, that system is one of the safest systems out there as far as stratification of air within a classroom. So at no point in time are we remixing air or bringing air back into the classrooms from other areas. Safe and Secure Plan. Again, this is looking at just the main level. We do look at it at each level. So the green areas are separate areas for safety and security. So those areas can be closed off if desired. You can see that we have stairwells that still allow egress down. At any point in time, you have multiple directions that you can travel to egress the building, whether it's in the case of an emergency such as a fire or exiting down to the lowest level for the storm shelter or some other factor that could happen. These are some of the images. So this is the main entry off of the parent drop-off. So this is what a parent would see and a child would see just before they're dropped off in the morning. The area directly behind the sign of the middle school is the main office area. So again, we have as much glass as possible to have eyes on site. Again, one of the biggest elements to safety and security is the passive observation and being able to see what's happening on a day-to-day basis as well as on any one occurrence. The large windows to the left-hand side of this image are the band room, choir room, and orchestra room. So those are larger volume spaces to help deal with the sound. And so we are able to have larger windows in that area. This is a south-facing elevation. So you can see that we do have window shades on there as well to knock down the solar heat gain, as well as even out the light levels within the classroom from a daylighting perspective. This is the north elevation. So if you were out in the, in the field looking to the south, this is what you would see. And here's where you can see the three-story education wing. The glass box in the middle is the media center. And again, this is north-facing glazing, so we don't have to worry about the solar heat gain creating a large cooling bill for you in this case. This image is the bus entry location. So the white band on the left-hand side is a canopy. You can see that we are portraying bike racks beneath that canopy, as well as a a formal entry sequence going into those triple doors for students to come in and out. You can also see the stair tower in the foreground on the right-hand side. And that is a stair tower that would be utilized by students both for egress purposes as well as navigating from floor to floor. In the very middle of the image, you'll see that with the light panels, light colored panels, the windows there do have the solar shading again. And that is because that is a predominantly south-facing wall. The large box on your left-hand side is the three-station gym. Moving to the interior of the space, this is an image of the cafeteria. Again, trying to make sure we bring daylight even into the middle of the building to activate students and, and carry on that, that goal exercise of making sure that we have warmth and daylight within the building. This is a view from the top floor looking down into the cafeteria, so one story up. This would be a view from the cafeteria looking over the media center and out those glass windows that face to the north. So again, looking out over the, the farm field that's there. This would be a glazed wall, and that is code requirement to make sure that we don't have three levels that are connected with the same atmosphere. And that is strictly from a fire code perspective. This is an image of the group, of one of the group learn spaces. So the areas directly on your left-hand side where the table and chairs are, those are two small group learn areas that have glass walls to separate the spaces acoustically so students can be in that area and be a little bit more boisterous and have conversations while they're doing project-based learning. On the wall that you can't see within that room, there would be a technology wall or a TV for the students to plug and play or project to. The group learn space is designed for circulation around the perimeter, as well as power and data at the column locations, and kind of flexible movable seating. And with that, I am going to switch over to the videos. And we will start off with the exterior video first. So the road on the south side of the school is 65th Street. Again, that road is being reconstructed, and the portion in front of the building will be completed in 2022. If you have been out to the site already, the tallest point of the site is approximately where the building sits, but we are shaving about 15 to 20 feet off of the top of that site to seat the building. Part of that is due to soil conditions, and part of it is to make sure that we can get the grades to work. So the entire site is handicap accessible on the perimeter. And by handicap accessible in Minnesota, that is a 5% grade or a 1 in 20 slope. So very manageable from a walking and biking standpoint, as well as being suitable for wheelchairs even in the wintertime. This side over here, which was, or which is the service loop for the loading dock up there, will also function as a special ed bus drop-off area. So again, having a direct access and kind of separation from the overall commotion of so many kids trying to leave at one time. So we do have three full-on exit points for this building, as well as three entry points. And then we do have one interior image as well. Excuse me, technical difficulties? All right, well, I do not believe I have that one downloaded anymore. So I will try a YouTube play of it, and hopefully that will work. With the bandwidth, sometimes it does not. Is it playing smoothly for everybody on your end?
Looks good from here.
So again, that is the main office on the right-hand side. Associated with the main office is the nurse area, community area, as well as the counselors and social workers as well. We also have spaces distributed throughout the building for them. The auditorium would be on your left-hand side as you go down this hallway. And then directly in front of you is the cafeteria. The kitchen area on the left-hand side does have coiling doors. So when that's not in use, you are able to drop those doors down and, and separate that space. There is also a community kitchen-type space, which is actually straight ahead through the glass windows. And so that would be available both to the students during the day, as well as the community after hours. And again, the intent for this building is that it would be used by the community quite a bit. And so we do have a number of different door scenarios that allow us to close off areas of the building so you don't have to maintain or monitor the entire building when you have it open. The wood that you see in the images is plywood. We've kind of come up with a detail where we think we're able to bring that warmth of wood into the building, keep it mostly out of reach of students, since it's not quite as durable as some other materials. But still make sure that we have the, the real feel of wood to go with the daylight and kind of satisfy that biophilic request that we heard quite a bit of from both staff and, and administration. So this is that group learning space that we talked about. And here you get a shot of those two group learn spaces with the TV monitors. The glass on the sides of the doors there is all about trying to get as much daylight from the stair towers back into those group learn spaces. Since they are interior-type spaces, anytime we can create a view or a vista to the exterior from the interior of the building, we try and achieve that. Can see in front of you the projection screen, so we took the opportunity to show the rendering of the building on the, on the projection screen.
Pretty tricky.
And then here are those monitors inside the group learn space. The final colors for the building have not been selected, so some of the images or colors that you see on here are quick renditions, but not necessarily the final materials. And again, this is now looking down into the cafeteria and seeing the clear story lighting over the roof of the gym and other spaces, as well as the view out at this level over the top of the media center. So with that, we will look at the schedule. So bid package one, that is the site bids, that award will be shortly after this presentation. Bid package two, structural, will be brought to you for your October 20th board meeting. And then bid pack three, final issue, will be November 5th with bids later in November, possibly early December, and approval shortly after that. The site construction, we are hoping to start that still in October of this year, with a project completion fall of 2022 for students to be entering the building. And that is all we have. Any questions?
Thank you. I think that we all appreciate seeing especially the video flyovers. Somehow that really brings it to life. Let's see who's got questions. Director Schlusner, we'll start with you, and then Director Nathan.
A quick question, Kevin. The discussion with the city for the bike tunnel under 65th, what's the latest on that?
So the city has hired their design firm for the road, which is SRF, and in a joint meeting with SRF, Bolton and Mink, who is our site designer, and the city, we did bring up the request for the tunnel. And so at this point, that would be an element that will be decided by the city, as far as the connection goes. We have also tried to link, I keep forgetting Danny's last name, Danny's with Safe Routes for Schools is one of your representatives. We've also linked her in on the conversation, hoping that we can get some state or federal funding for that underpass or that tunnel underneath 65th.
Okay, and I had one other question. Thinking about how this project compares to, say, the Harriet Bishop, or I asked you where with Harriet Bishop, it seems to be we have a road around the school for fire reasons, for access reasons, and we don't here. What's the difference, other than this is a larger school?
One of the major differences is that we have enough, I'll call it, clear area around the site, so the building is not a threat to any residential homes around it due to the site location. And then also just the, I'll call it the overall approach or feedback that we received from the fire chief, that he was comfortable with access to the points that we have, which are off of each corner. The other piece for Bishop is the road originally did not continue all the way around. One of the reasons we elected to continue it all the way around is for the large semi-trailers that might be delivering commodities and/or supplies occasionally to the building. And so instead of trying to create a turnaround spot for them on the backside of Bishop, it was easier to continue the road that extra little bit because of the hillside going up to West Circle Drive.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Director Nathan, do you still have something?
Sorry, I'm playing with my buttons. This is actually a question for Keen and not on the middle school, so I can wait until after we're done with the design questions on the middle school.
Okay, thank you. Director Amundson?
Thanks. I've got two questions. One is the standard bathroom question. The other is this new idea, or new-to-me idea of a bike tunnel. Are we talking a tunnel, or are we talking more of an underpass? And would there be security issues with something like that, where there'd need to be extra safety measures in place for kids going through a tunnel, depending on how tunnel-like it is? Did we lose?
You're on mute, Kevin.
I still can't hear Kevin.
That's because I was on mute.
There you go.
The bus drive access to 65th, directly across the road from that, you can barely see it kind of below the H and the W in northwest. There is an existing bike path right now. That bike path actually jogs to the west to try and make it up over the top of 65th. And so there is actually enough grade where we would be able to go straight ahead with that path and come out very near the sidewalk intersection that we have adjacent to the bus loop. So that is where the tunnel would go. When we talk about a tunnel, it would be somewhere between either two 10-foot tunnels or one 14-foot wide tunnel that would allow the bike path to go through it. And it is more of a tunnel than an underpass due to cost restrictions. It is possible that they may open it up a little bit more than that, but at this point, it would be more like a very large box culvert for access back and forth to avoid having to cross over the top of the traffic.
And then the bathroom questions about the gender division?
Yep. So what I can say about the bathroom piece is we have managed to create a vast majority of the stalls to be gender neutral. We do still need the variance, which is a state-level variance from the plumbing code, and we are working with the district. We are going to get letters both at the elementary level and at the middle school level to support it from a student's perspective, as well as providing the technical data of our approach to the bathrooms in the hopes that we can get that variance. If we are not able to get that variance, essentially what would happen is the bathrooms that you see on this sheet here would be gender-specific, and then the bathrooms on the upper level would be predominantly gender-neutral, with the exception that the handicap stalls would likely still be a gender-specific until that variance is approved. And then on the lower level, it's a similar situation.
And when do we expect to know that for sure?
We, I believe we plan on submitting the elementary within the next few weeks. The middle school is probably a month out before we submit it, and it will likely be a three-to-four week turnaround with, be longer than that if we have to go through a question-answer session, but...
Okay. Let's see. Any other questions about the building design?
I have one.
Yeah, go ahead, Kathy.
So Kevin, I think I ask this question every time you bring a design. The last time we saw a budget for the middle school, it was about $62 million, and now we're at $59. So where did you find the efficiencies, and did we have to give up anything on our wish list?
So a large portion of that efficiencies are what Keen is going to be presenting next. The site bids came in significantly under, which is great news. And I don't want to steal Keen's thunder, so I'll let him kind of talk about that. But we do continue to look at ways to refine it. Part of it is just when Knutson does their early estimates, they have to plan for contingencies and allowances for a design that's not complete. And then as we get closer and further into it, we find less expensive ways to achieve the same piece, and they're able to fine-tune their numbers and get a little bit tighter with it as we go besides the better bidding, the good bids that we've been getting and the climate that we're in.
Great. Okay. Anything else for Kevin? And if not, we'll turn it over to Keen. Oh, Director Workman?
I'm trying to put my hand down.
Okay. Did you have something? Or you just, you're... Okay. I see you're muted. So let's move on.
Director Workman, or Director Seelinger?
Yes, ma'am.
Are we still talking about the agenda item?
Yep, Keen, yep. Yep, Keen's coming on. I see him. I see him in the distance there. Needs to unmute if he's going to present, but he's there.
I believe what I have to present is actually the next agenda item.
Yeah, Deborah, I think if we get the next agenda item, that'll answer Kathy's question.
So just to clarify, I think Kathy has a question on the whole long, the attachment A?
Yes.
So is that coming? Keen, is that something you can answer now?
Sure.
Okay. Kathy, go ahead. A question on attachment A.
Yes. So I was trying to educate myself on this by going back and looking at the other documents. And I always take heart when you say that built into these bottom-line numbers is an $8 million contingency. And I just want to verify, so there's an amount in the budget for each of the buildings that if we added it all up, it would be $8 million?
That is correct. And as Kevin kind of alluded to, as design progresses on each of these, we start reducing that contingency number.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I was understanding it clearly. Thank you.
Director Workman, do you have a question on attachment A?
I do. So I noticed on the new middle school, it's highlighted that it's two to four weeks behind. Is this something that's part of, normally part of what happens, and you make up the time at some other point?
Yes. Really, as Kevin alluded to, we split this project into three bidding packages. We had originally only planned to do two, and due to the later selection of the site, we decided that to get ourselves into the ground and started in construction sooner, we would break it up further. Two to four weeks is kind of an estimate. There's really no jeopardy at this point for the fall of '22 being ready for school.
Thank you. That's exactly what I wanted to hear.
It's like an airplane. You fly faster, and you still get there on time, something? Any other questions on this item, information item? Not seeing any hands. Giving everybody a minute. Okay. Thank you for that. I guess we will move to 7.02, Approval of Proposals for Construction of New Middle School Package Number 13, no, Number 31A. This is a briefing item. Superintendent?
Yes, I'll turn this over to Scott Sheridan, Executive Director of Operations, and Keen McWaters from Knutson to brief us on this agenda item.
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening again, board members. Presenting, we're seeking approval of proposals for the construction of middle school, of the new middle school. This is for Package 31A, which relates to earthwork and utilities. And as Kevin and Keen both mentioned in referendum update, this is the first of three proposal packages that will be coming forward through your approval for the middle school. And we broke it into the three packages because we wanted to get the earthwork and utilities approved as soon as we could to beat the winter and get into the ground so we can get the project going. So on August 14th of 2020, the purchasing manager posted the request proposal for this package, and it was a best value proposal. On September 4, we received five proposals. And again, these are managed by the purchasing manager for the district. And one of the proposals was rejected due to the failure of the contract to follow the best value proposed process, or proposal process. But the four remaining ones were blind rated by members of the construction services team and other facility members, and they were rated on their assessment, team expertise, or risk assessment, I'm sorry, the team expertise and the value adds. Those were all blind rated, turned over to the purchasing manager. Then on September 9th, we interviewed all four firms. They were individually rated and scored. Purchasing manager then tabulated all the scores and assessed the cost to determine which was rated highest. And through this process, Boland or Excavating was rated highest in the best value process, and Edge Construction, or Edge Contracting, was rated second highest. Now, in the RFP, it spells out that if the second-rated contractor is within 5%, their overall score is within 5% of the first one, then the district has the option to select a low bid of the two contractors. And in this particular instance, the second-rated Edge Contracting's bid was lower, and so that's the one that we're putting forth tonight for approval.
Questions, board members? Pretty straightforward. A desire to move this to action. Okay, Mark Schlusner, Director Schlusner?
I don't have a question, but more of a comment of, you know, I'd just like to say the folks that we've been working with, such as Keenan and Kevin and folks, have been doing a very outstanding job and being extremely cost-conscious through the entire process. And I think it's important that our community hears that, that at the weekly meetings, you know, we're focusing on where can we save money but get the most, what we need for our students at the end of the day. So I'd just like to thank them for the great work that they're doing, when I know that sometimes our community questions when we spend money on consultants. Money extremely well-spent here.
Thank you, Mr. Schlusner. And move to action, Marvin.
Second, Nathan.
It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Edgar?
Ms. Amundson?
Aye.
Mr. Barlow?
Aye.
Ms. Marvin?
Aye.
Ms. Nathan?
Aye.
Mr. Schlusner?
Aye.
Chair Seelinger?
Aye.
Ms. Workman?
Aye.
Thank you.
It is now an action item. I will read the resolution. It resolves that the School Board of Independent School District 535 approves the Earthwork and Utilities Package 31A proposal from Edge Contracting in the amount of $3,47,088 for the 2019 middle school.
Move approval, Amundson?
Second.
Ms. Edgar?
Ms. Amundson?
Aye.
Mr. Barlow?
Aye.
Ms. Marvin?
Aye.
Ms. Nathan?
Aye.
Mr. Schlusner?
Aye.
Chair Seelinger?
Aye.
Ms. Workman?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sheridan, Mr. McWaters. Nice to see you again.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks. You too.
Thank you.
All right. Board members, it is 7:21. I am going to move us into recess at 7:21 until 7:30 PM. We are reconvening at 7:30 PM. 7.03, Bell Time Study Proposal. This is a briefing item. Superintendent?
Yes, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Scott Sheridan, Executive Director of Operations, Jeff Cappers, Transportation Manager, and Jeff Whitney, Male Activities Director. These were individuals that were part of the bell time study group.
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening, board members. I'll start off with a quick little background. This is our sixth... This is our sixth presentation to the board regarding Belttime Study Committee that was formed back in February of 2019. There is a little bit more of a history to this, where this actually originated from our study that we did with Rochester Public Transit, where we were reviewing with them the possibility of trying to get a single-tier busing system utilizing city buses. Throughout that process, we reviewed all kinds of options, and it eventually turned out that it just wouldn't be cost-effective to do that in cooperation with the city. And so, we explored doing a single-tier busing using first student as a guide. And through our determination there, in order to do the single tier where all students have the same start time or approximately the same start time, whether it's elementary or secondary, that did not prove to be cost-effective either, as estimates at that time were about $6 million a year in extra transportation costs to make a single tier. So, through all that, we did form the Belttime Study Committee in February of 2019. We had about 15 members. We've added a few since that time, but it covered a wide range of staff within the district, including transportation, elementary, high school, SNS, school-aged childcare activities directors, and some district administration. And like I said, during that time, we came, we created options, came to the board, had some really good conversations, a lot of good input, a lot of discussions back and forth. We even had a study session on February, I believe it was February 10th, and had a really good discussion during that time. And our committee continued to meet after that. Then on August 4th of this past year, that was the last presentation that we did. And at that time, we presented two options, which included a, which both included a later start time for the secondary schools. And we also presented to the board the survey results that were suggested that we get input from staff, elementary staff, middle school staff, and elementary parents. So, tonight, we're presenting the two options that we presented on the August 4th meeting. And we're also bringing back two other options that allow for, that show elementary schools starting prior to the secondary. So, the first two options are the secondary just starting later in the morning, with the elementary being somewhat close to their normal time later in the morning. And then the options C and D are the ones that contain the elementary start time prior to the secondary. The key to all this, obviously, is our costs. And I would love to be able to tell you that each of these options are, if there is an increasing cost, they're gonna cost exactly this amount. But it's very difficult, when you see the complexity of this, which I've learned over the years, but Jeff Cappers has a really good handle on this. But there's so many complexities within the routing system when you include district-wide option schools and non-public students. And we have to route not just our students, but all the non-publics as well with the variety of calendars that we have. It's quite an operation to do. But we do have some ideas of cost for extra routes, because that came from our contract. And so, if we were gonna run a route in the morning and the afternoon, that one route costs $6,847 for that 173-day calendar year. So, we need to keep that in mind. And then, when I was talking about the routing, if we were going to take each of these options and try to do a routing to get a more determinate cost on what each of these cost, to do one routing, the new schedule would be about $10,000 to $15,000. So, if we were gonna do four, we're up to, you know, about $60,000 to do it. So, we want to be very careful how we do this. And that's why we're bringing these options, to have more discussion with the board, get your input, and take it from there. So, I'm gonna try to share the PowerPoint here that we can... Yeah, it's not there, of course. So, is it, can you see it?
We could, yeah, we can see your document list, but you haven't clicked on it to open. Or that's what I can see, anyway.
Try another route here. I had it open. How about now?
That looks like it. There you go, Scott. Thank you.
Well, that's the first success I've had today. There we go. How about that? So, a couple of other things that, just to reiterate, I don't wanna go over all the details that we've discussed over the past six sessions, but I kinda highlighted some of the things that we really need to keep in mind. Statutorily, we're required to have 1,020 instructional hours at the secondary level per year. And that, those are instructional hours. We do not include lunch. But it does include the passing time. So, on our, if we would, we put that in our 173-day calendar, we need a minimum of 5 hours and 54 minutes per day at the secondary level. Currently, at the, well, not currently, obviously, right now with the COVID, but last year, we'll say last fall, at the high school, the schedule was 6 hours and 43 minutes per day. Middle schools were at 6 hours and 20 minutes per day. And now, when we look at the elementary grades 1 to 5, statutorily, they're required to have a minimum of 935 instructional hours annually. Again, lunchtime not included. And so, on our 173-day calendar, this equates to 5 hours and 25 minutes per day. And our elementaries are currently up at about 6 hours per day. There's some that go a little longer, maybe 5 minutes or so, so it may be about 6 hours, 5 minutes. And I did put a note at the bottom of this. We didn't have all-day kindergarten, as you know, and that requires an 850-hour annually, which is significantly less than what the elementary schools are. But the kindergarten schedule is the same, for the most part, same as the elementary grades 1 through 5. And then in the pre-K, I also noted that we need, if we're gonna do that, it requires 350 hours on an annual basis. So, going back, this is the option that you saw on August 4th. I just redated the slide on here. And this is where we had the high schools starting at 8:20 in the morning, ending at 3:30. And this is with 35 or 36-minute lunch. Middle schools starting at 5, out at 3 o'clock with a 30-minute lunch. And then the elementary schools, starting at 9:35. And they are moved back to about a 4 p.m. dismissal time. Elementarys have that 20-minute lunch, and then they go outside for 20 minutes. One thing to keep in mind at the end of the day is we need to have a 30-minute break, or 30 minutes in between high schools, middle schools, and elementarys, to keep the transportation moving. RELC would start at 8:25 in the schedule and at 3:10. Fidel, at the schedule, would start at 8:20 and end at 3:08. And then it spells out what the instructional hours would be for each of those levels. Option B is just a little different. It looks similar to Option A, except that the middle schools now start at the same time as the high schools. And this is where their instructional time is reduced a little bit. And in this scenario, Fidel would start at 8:20 still. There's pros and cons for Option A and B. The high school would start about 40 minutes later than their current start time. And it gets us fairly close to what the research recommendations from the Mayo Clinic doctors that presented to us recommended as about an 8:30 a.m. start. And the middle schools would start about 25 minutes later in Option A and 40 minutes later in Option B. And we tried to keep the instructional time comparable to what they currently have from last fall. And with the minimal impact on the school activities on the secondary level and for staff. And you compare them to the coming options of C and D. The cons for Option A and B is the elementary school. Like I said earlier, they would be dismissing about 4 o'clock, which is 25 minutes later than most of them would dismiss as of last fall. And the other part of this is the lunchtime scheduling, particularly at the high school level. If we have that 35 or 36-minute lunch, it impacts SNS in a significant way, actually, because cafeterias only have so much capacity. And if they only have 36 minutes to get a third of the students through, it puts quite a, not a burden on them, but it requires a lot more staff, some more staffing in order to try to get this done. There are options here, where you could potentially reduce some instructional time throughout the day in order to expand the lunchtime. There is an option there. The high school principals, if we give them parameters as far as start time and end time, they're very creative in their scheduling. And obviously, they know their buildings very well. And they can create schedules that could potentially work here. Like I said, there is some impact to the after-school activities. And then with the elementary school late dismissal, with some of the routes that where the students are on the bus for an hour, sometimes an hour and 10 minutes, there is potential in the winter months, in the deep dark winter months, where the sun goes down around 5 p.m. or so, that they could be dropped off potentially at a bus stop in the dark. And there's a little bit of transportation cost increase we anticipate potentially out of this. But again, like I explained earlier, that's difficult to assess without doing the routing. So, we go to the options C and D. These are both on this page. And this is where we have the elementary school schedules starting prior to the high school, middle school. And as you can see, the high school's starting at 9:15 and getting out at 4:12. And this is with a 50-minute lunch. And the middle school would get out at 3:52 p.m. They would maintain their 30-minute lunch. And the elementary schools would get out at 2:20 p.m., their 20-minute lunch. They would start at 8 a.m. We adjusted that a little bit. It's provided from the school board as far as that 8 a.m. start. We moved it to 8:15 for the elementary, which would then get them out at 2:35. If we pushed the high school and middle school forward 15 minutes as well, it adjusts their start time to 9:30 and their end times at the high school to 4:27, middle school at 4:07. And again, that's the high school with the 50-minute lunch in there. And then it explains the instructional hours. Instructional time is 6 hours and 7 minutes. So, that's with that 50-minute lunch. Like I said, we need 5 hours and 54 minutes a day over that 73-day schedule to match the 1,020 hours required by a state statute. So, you know, there's a copy out here that time could be increased if lunch is reduced. Middle school's pretty basic, pretty standard. Their instructional time, again, would be reduced under Option C and D, about 6 hours and 7 minutes. And with the elementary school, their instructional time would be about 6 hours, which is about what they currently have. And the pros for this, of course, is the high school starts at 9:15, which is significantly later than the 8:30 start time. And the elementary dismissal time is much earlier than Option A and B, with that 4 o'clock dismissal time. They're now getting out about 2:20. And so, this assures that they're not walking home in the dark. However, of course, the con of that is they could be getting on the bus in the dark during the winter months, because there's a, like I said, there's that hour, possibly hour and 10-minute bus ride, so that they would be getting picked up at about 6:50 in the morning at the earliest, about 7 o'clock. And again, if the sun's just coming up about that time, that's one of the cons of this schedule. And we also talked about the daycare concerns, where there are some families that rely on their secondary student to care for their younger siblings who are elementary age. And if the elementary students are getting out at 2:20, which is almost an hour and a half or more than their older siblings, that could cause some daycare concerns for families. It also affects, of course, the SAC and SAC activities. And it limits the potential for high school students to support the SAC at least until the high schools are out. But you have that, like I said, an hour and a half. If the elementary students are out at 2:20 and they go to SAC, will they have enough staffing to support that until they can get supplemental help from the high school students, if they get those students to do that? And then the transfer sites are impacted, and this is one that isn't, it's a concern. What we mean by this is if we, with these options, the transfer sites would be at the middle schools and where they're currently at the high schools. The high schools have more room. The middle schools have less room. If you can picture John Adams, which is in a residential area, limited parking and access, if we're transferring in numerous buses at that school, causing more traffic, it's something we really need to look at. Same thing applies at Kellogg. I believe at Willow, we have plenty of room to do transfers, though. But at Kellogg, again, you have a residential school with limited area to do those transfers. So, that's the end of my slideshow. And I imagine you're going to have some questions for me. And that's why I have Jeff Whitney with me and Jeff Cappers. Like I said, Jeff is the one that knows everything about transportation. And as an introduction for Jeff Whitney, I believe you all know him, but he is the Activities Director out at Mayo High School. He's been around a year or two, so he has an idea of all the activities that occur after-school hours.
Thank you, Mr. Sheridan, for your presentation, your sixth presentation, so noted. Unfortunately, in six presentations, you haven't given us the magic solution that meets all of everything that we wish it could be with the best times for secondary, elementary, no-cost, perfect lunch periods, SAC staff, yada, yada, yada. So, thank you for that. And thank you, I also want to say thanks to our community, because this has been an ongoing discussion, and we have heard your feedback. And we hope that you understand that this is, I think I will speak for all of us when I say this is not a decision that we are entering in lightly. This has caused all of us, board members, to have a lot of thought and questions. And so, thanks for your patience. What I think that we, where I think that we are for tonight, we do have four proposals in front of us. We have a variety of resolutions. I can't say for certain. I don't want to say we're approving anything tonight or not. But I think at this point, we need to sort of come to some sort of consensus, board members, about where we want to go and try to move this forward one way or another for the good of the community and for the good of our staff, who's been working really hard on that. So, thank you for indulging my introductory remarks. And we are going to begin with Director Amundson.
Thank you. Mr. Sheridan, as Chair Seelinger said, there's nothing perfect in any of these. We know that there are pros and cons. My very high-level question for you is, of all the different proposals in your list of cons and the drawbacks, are any of them so large to you that... cons and the drawbacks, are any of them so large to you that you think they might not be able to overcome? I'm thinking specifically of the childcare question. I mean, are we super concerned about that? Or is it just a challenge that we would have to work to overcome?
I think it's the latter. I think it's a challenge that we would have to work to overcome. I don't know if Amy Icke would like to pipe in on this, but they do a remarkable job of adjusting to different things, as you well know, particularly with COVID and the emergency childcare. I mean, they do a fantastic job adjusting to things. I have faith that they can try to figure it out. I don't think it's, I don't want to speak for Amy, but I don't think it's something that cannot be overcome.
Amy, go ahead.
I would agree with that. I do think it will be difficult to replace that large portion of our staffing if the high school gets out significantly later than the elementary. But as Scott said, we would take it on and perhaps have to come up with some different solutions. It might mean limiting our registration. That's certainly the last option that we would go to. But if we felt like we had exhausted all of the other options and couldn't find enough staff, we would not be able to serve the same number of students that we serve today. But again, that'd be our last option.
Thank you, Amy.
All right. So just following up with Melissa's comment on the childcare, do we have any idea about the number of families that would be affected? I mean, I realize we've been talking about this for, I don't know, 40 years. So a lot of those kids have already grown up and gone to college and they're back having families of their own. Just in terms of the impact. And, you know, there are so many ways that the community is coming together under the current situation with the pandemic and trying to work together to form solutions that I'm hoping that this kind of collaboration and, well, just working together to try and figure out what is a community problem. It's not just a school problem. It's something that we're, you know, we're going to have to have everybody pitch in to help figure out. But do you have any idea how many students we'd be looking at who would be really suffering from childcare? I know we had a survey, but...
The survey covered the 8:00 AM start. Is that the one you're asking about with the 8:20 dismissal, correct?
Well, whichever, I think there was a question more on the end of the day if high schools were to be starting later and elementary were earlier. So there would be a gap of maybe an hour and a half before siblings came home.
Right. I would have to defer to Amy on that one. I don't know the numbers of, she might have a better handle on that one. Are you willing to try to answer that one?
I saw Superintendent Munoz pop in there, so I thought maybe he had something he wanted to say before I jump in.
Yeah, I would just, I think, and Heather, you'll have to correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think one of the survey questions you asked us to do is to ask elementary teachers if they knew how many kids relied on older siblings for childcare. And I think, if I remember right, they didn't really know. Weren't very many of them that knew if their older siblings were taken care of. But it was not a question that we specifically asked parents.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Director Nathan.
Good evening, Mr. Sheridan. We didn't get a chance to say that at the beginning. So, okay, some questions about some of the options. So our option A and B with a 35 or 36-minute lunch, is that under that split lunch schedule where there would be three different lunches within the lunch hour? And then...
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, so just a question about the, I'm going to leave the cost thing till later. A question about the timing. So you've tried to educate us that the difference in timing of the tiers for busing is that you need an hour between secondary and elementary to have a two-tiered approach. But our options C and D are at an hour and 15 minutes. So is it really an hour and 15 minutes? And there's not, is there any wiggle room with any of those times, I guess, is my question?
When we first started reviewing this back in February 2019, we did put in that hour recommendation. As time went on and we got more in-depth with discussing it with First Student and with Jeff, ideally, it's that hour and 15 minutes is what we need. Jeff, you're welcome to pipe in here. There's always wiggle room. And I gotta, I gotta say that when Jeff and John get together, John, when I say John, I mean John Gates from First Student, those two get together and they get their minds working, creativity, they come up and try to address, you know, what we can do to reduce the 75 minutes down? Or what we can do to try to reduce that 30-minute in-between, the dismissal times? Or where we can move transfer sites that'd be more ideal? Or transfer kids up and orinoco to different buses, putting them on different buses that are coming from other places? It boggles my mind. I don't know how they keep track of it. And a lot of it, they do without notes, because it's all in their heads. But Jeff, if you're willing to answer the 75-minute versus one-hour question that Director Nathan had.
Sure, welcome, board members. I'm going to try to answer it the best I can. The biggest problem we have, the biggest challenge on the time is special ed, because we cover so much ground. You know, I've ridden, I've been a substitute bus parent on several routes. And one I rode a couple of years ago, we went and dropped kids at Century, Kellogg. We didn't even have time for a bathroom break, and we had to be cleared down by Fleet Farm to get kids to take to Bishop. So when you crunch those times down, especially at the front part of the day, there's going to be a cost, either in additional routes or more vans, is what I'm seeing. So that's the biggest driver is our special ed. And hopefully, as we get more schools online, we'll have better, more options for programming and we aren't busing kids across town, because we can't, you can't transfer a special needs child. You have to direct ride them. And hopefully, there'll be some efficiencies in our program placements and whatnot that we could, we could try to trim that down. As you can see in options C and D, we're really crunching down the end of the day. And we're going to really have to be creative in our, in our, we might have to do some more transferring in middle schools, at the high schools, if there's capacity. But that's why I think we need to narrow down to a, one or two options and really spend the time to do a study to get a good, a good sense on it. Is it even doable? You know, where do we put transfers? Because it's, it might take some creative transferring. We might, I'm just tossing out, we might be transferring at Fleet Farm. I'm not sure. Just to make it, make it all come together, so.
Thank you, Mr. Kappers. Appreciate that. Director Workman, you popped up. Do you have a question?
I do. So on C and D, the high school has a 50-minute lunch. Would this also be on the split lunch, ABC split lunch? Or would this 50-minute lunch be a dedicated class period like it is now? If you understand what I'm saying. I mean, right now, we have an eight-period day and one of those periods is lunch. So is that what you would anticipate with a 50-minute lunch?
Yes, it is.
Okay, okay. I'm really concerned. I think there was a lot of discussion. I don't believe who raised the issue at one of our meetings, that when we go to the split lunch, which is a seven-period day plus lunch, that when there are only seven slots to schedule in the current eight, that means a lot of students would not get their seventh choice. And it reduces flexibility considerably. So I would really like to avoid that. If at some point, we need to go to that schedule in order to make budget reduction, that's a whole different conversation that I think needs to be not part of this one. So I really can't support having the split lunch and a seven-period day.
Director Marvin.
Thank you. It seems to me that right now, we're looking at three different issues here. One of them is educational efficacy. That is, what is best, what's the best schedule for our kids to get educated? We know proof positive that secondary kids do better when they start school later. We have heard from elementary teachers, who I absolutely respect, that many of their students don't learn as well towards the end of the day. I believe that elementary teachers and elementary schools would be able to restructure their days so that the sort of intense educational experiences would start later, would start earlier, and they could do that. So that part, I think our staff can figure out regardless of what the time of day is. Then we're looking at cost, you know, in transportation. Then we're looking at sort of family convenience and after-school sports and that kind of thing. So there's three different issues. But what I hope we can focus on is what's going to be best for our kids. And I think, right now, our focus has to be that adolescents do better when they start later. To me, that should be thing one. Thing two should be cost. And I think the rest of it, we can figure out. Like schools, secondary schools, for instance, with a lunch thing, they've judged that. I mean, they've done block schedule, they've done different lunch schedules, they can work that out. Elementary teachers are brilliant. If kids are going to be in elementary school till four o'clock, they know how to work the schedules so that that's going to work best for their kids.
Jean, you're breaking up.
Jean, if you can hear us, you'll need to just stop and start over. We're not getting anything.
Okay, now you're frozen, Jean.
Can she hear you when she's frozen?
I don't know.
Long time.
I don't think so.
Okay.
But if she's looking at the screen...
Yeah.
It looks like you're frozen, if she's looking at her screen.
Right. Okay. Let's come back to Jean, or come back when Jean might pop in better. Julie, I think you were the next one with your hand up, so go ahead.
Yep, thank you. Thank you. No, I absolutely support everything that Director Marvin just said concerning the adolescent sleep time. Director Nathan was kind enough to send us some articles of the elementary research that's out there. There's not a whole lot. But the overall gist of it is, is that it's, that elementary students do better earlier in the day. Well, actually, they don't do worse earlier in the day. So I don't think that that's a huge concern in terms of having them have an earlier start time. But I'm just wondering what might happen if we took the high school time of 9:15 and made it 9:00 and then backed up the elementary school to 7:45? How much conflict might there be with the sun or lack of light? Since their, you know, dawn is before sunrise, but there's still some light. And once again, it depends on the number of students that are affected and whether parents can wait with them or for, but, you know, like Dr. Marvin said, I mean, I don't, those aren't problems that we need to be figuring out at this point. And I think the conversation is well-served if we can stay on the educational pieces and any pieces that you think are absolutely not able to be overcome. And I've heard, you know, Amy's been very kind in saying, we'll figure it out. But I know, I know it's much more complicated than that, especially with our transportation routes.
Yeah, thank you for that. One of the things I'd like to remind everyone, when you look at the start times, that isn't the drop time. We do, you know, some of the students are dropped, and Jeff can help me with this one, 15, 20 minutes prior to the start time. Sometimes, I mean, even though Jeff, even longer, earlier than that. We need to keep that in...
Especially now, even at the high schools, we probably drop 7:10 to make, to make, like Century to Lourdes, down to ALC. You know, just to cover, cover the ground, we need to cover it with those transfer kids from our district options and non-publics. We need that, we need that drive time.
Yeah, and so I guess one of the other things that I really want to emphasize and ask you to consider, and so I'm kind of throwing it back your way, is instructional time. And I know how important that is, and I get it. Is your intent to keep the instructional time comparable to what it is now? Because it is well in excess of what the state statute is. If you're willing to allow us to adjust that instructional time, then it opens a whole other avenues that we can look at. Throughout this entire process, we've tried to keep that instructional time about the same. But again, so throwing it back to you, if perchance, there's an option there to reduce that instructional time and allow the creativity of the, as you said, the elementary principals and high school, secondary principals, to create schedules that are most effective for them, it might allow us to provide some different options that might bring us closer to that perfect one. But, and then, of course, there's the cost piece. And that's a tough discussion, a really difficult discussion when John Carlson comes and he's looking, he's doing his remarkable job, he always does, looking for the future down the road, two, three years, and budget impacts, the potential issues that we might be facing. And with the effect that the COVID has had on our budget as well, and the potential impact that's going to have, not just on our budget, but statewide. Is this the time to spend a half million or million dollars extra a year on transportation? It might be. Again, that's a board decision, obviously, to make. But if you provide us those parameters, again, that you think you, as a collective group, can live with, we can come back with a creative schedule, I believe. I really do believe we can.
I think what's important to me is the quality of time that the students have and not necessarily base it all on minutes. Obviously, we have the statute. But I really appreciate your thorough answer, Scott. Thank you.
So I think, I think Scott has brought to light something that, in some ways, I feel like is helpful, in some ways, I think is like, oh, really? Did you want to, really? But I totally appreciate it, right? And I, and I think that's why this decision becomes so difficult. I'm going to go to you next superintendent, just so you know. Because we all kind of have an internal priority list about how we're making this decision. And as, as Jean spoke to, she kind of had her first three things. I kind of have the similar, to me, I'm looking at what time are we starting and what time are we ending? And I don't think I care what, what you guys are figuring out in between, right? I'm just looking at that number. So I only want to say that in caution of, to make sure that, that if the board wants to look at something like the instructional time a little bit more closely, that we not get tripped up into, so much so that we are... get tripped up into, so much so that we are dictating the classes and the passing time and all those things. Let's just try, if, if we're going to move forward with something like that, let's just give some broad parameters, so that we don't continue down this more information, minutia information, adjust this by two minutes, adjust this by five minutes, because that's not serving any of us well, and it's probably making our staff a little bit tired, I'll just say tired. Superintendent, I'm going to go to you next before I go back to board members.
Yeah, I just, I do want to caution us with what Scott said. I mean, we can carve off minutes from instructional time, but, you know, in the past, we've always built in snow days, and I think the most we've had, one year of six days. So, and there's a way to get around that. I mean, now that we are going to become distance learning experts, we could go to e-learning days on snow days. And current statute allows you to do five. They did give us an exception at one time to go up to 10 last spring. I don't know if that would carry into this current year or next year. And then there's the, that would probably have to be negotiated in the REA contract. However, we do, there is language already that the board has the authority to say, "We are going to make those days up," and teachers would have to make them up. So we do have a little leadway there, so we could make up those days if we look like we're going to run short on minutes. But I would caution us not to get too carried away with carving off minutes of instructional time, because, you know, we always, we're in Minnesota, so we always have to worry about those snow days unless we have that e-learning option.
Superintendent, I just want to give you the floor for a few more minutes, if you want it. In terms of, you know, we have these four proposals in front of us, and we have a rejection of every one of these proposals. Is there, I think back to Director Workman's question and Director Amundsen's question, like, is there something that, as administration has looked at this, has just gone, "Boy, that would be the hardest thing to overcome." I sure hope they don't choose that. Or is there a way that, you know, you can advise us to look at this in terms of prioritizing the different aspects of this decision? If, just wanted to offer you that option.
Yeah, I guess what I would say is, I think, basically just what you just said earlier, Deborah, I think really the board focused on start-in time and let, let the high school principals figure out the lunch time and all those other details. I don't, even if we carve time off instructional time, we are not going to find a perfect schedule. You know, for example, if we run high school beyond four o'clock, well, during the winter, we had very limited time that we can get ice time, so we're probably going to have to do hockey practice at 6:00 in the morning, 5:00 in the morning. So then you defeat your purpose of getting that extra sleep if you're, and I know you're not talking to as many kids, but that's just an example that if, if there was a perfect answer, we would have found it by now, because we've been working at this for a long time, and a lot of people have been maneuvering things around. I think carving some instructional time off will help some, but I think we're still going to come with some cons for many of the options.
Thank you. I kind of got lost about how many hands are going on. So I'm going to go to Director Nathan, because we haven't heard from her since, but I promise I will get to everybody. We've got plenty of...
So on the question of instructional time, you know, right now, when we look at options C and D, we're already losing 36 minutes from the high school schedule, whereas options A and B, we're only losing about nine. And at what point, how many minutes, let's our, sorry, I'm saying this the right way. At what point do the minutes that we take out of the high school day mean one less course or period in the high school schedule? So there, for example, there's just not enough minutes in the day to have six classes plus a seventh choice, so it's going to be six classes.
Yeah, I guess I don't, I don't see that being an issue, because we could offer, you, a student would take the same number of classes, they would just be 40 minutes versus 50-some minutes. So I, and back to the, the split lunch thing, I do want to clarify, think, something, we do not have a seventh choice for every high school student. That's, that's not been an option. I think that was a reduction, I was told, back in the 2010, when you, when y'all made that big $9 million reduction. There are some students that do get that seventh option. But back to your answer, Kathy, I think we would still get the same number of classes a student could have, that he would just, he or she would spend less time in those classes, because we'd be carving time off the class time.
And can I just follow up? I know we've asked the middle school teachers in the survey whether a 10-minute decrease in the minutes per day would affect instruction, and overwhelmingly, they said it was fine. Have we asked the high school stu, the high school teachers how much we could carve out of a period and still have it be an appropriate academic teaching time?
No, we have, we have not surveyed them with that question.
And Director Nathan, if I could add to what the Superintendent said regarding options C and D, instructional time compared to A and B. If C and D builds in that 50-minute lunch, and a lot of the questions are about wiggle room, well, you do have the wiggle room in that 50-minute lunch of C and D, if you wanted to increase instructional time, because you're concerned about the reduction there, then you could potentially reduce the lunch there. But then again, you'd go back to some type of split lunch, again. But they're, like, the questions are, there's always a wiggle room in schedules like that.
Thanks.
Before I go to Director Amundsen, I just want to check in. Director Marvin, are you able to still be with us and hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay, great. We're, I'm glad to know. Thank you. Director Amundsen.
Whatever. Thank you.
Now, I click it, it lags, I click it again, it turns off. I was going to say something different, but back to what we were just talking about. Mr. Sheridan, you just said there's more wiggle room in C and D for lunch, but there's also an asterisk at the bottom that says instructional time could be increased if lunchtime is reduced. By how much? And there you go.
Well, the, I'd hate to get too much less than the 35 minutes. There is a federal, I was informed by SNS that there is a federal law that they need 15 minutes of seat time to eat their lunch, or lunch period. And so when you add in the time it takes to get to lunch and get their lunch from their server.
Sure.
They'll sit down, it require, you need, you need to build in that time as well.
I was just wondering if it's a negligible amount or a good enough chunk that it would get it closer to A and B, because that will, that, that's, that's, Director Seelinger was talking about our, our list of priorities, and I actually have them on a piece of paper. And that is my top concern, and it will completely change my answer if we can address the instructional time. So I see Mr. Menius wanting to...
Yeah, I would just say, the, the more time we carve off of lunch, pretty much eliminates open campus for lunch, and then that, that creates a huge issue for having the capacity to serve that many students, yeah.
So, so what Chair Seelinger was saying, and I totally respect what you're saying, to not get into the details, but if the details will address my concerns enough to change answers, that's what I'm looking at. So one, one concern I have, and since we started talking about this issue, we have, we're living in a whole new world, right? So we've created new solutions to problems that we could maybe apply to this question. For instance, the block schedule. That would be a way to regain some of our instructional time by reducing passing time and also address the concerns of certain subjects such as science and PE, where they may no longer have long enough class periods to do the things they need. If, if my math is correct, if we're losing the instructional time, option C, the 36 minutes a day would be, you know, around five to seven minutes per class period, that, that could significantly affect, you know, science experiments and the amount of time it takes to dry your hair after you go swimming and things like that. So I'm not asking for an answer yes or no, I'm asking for a direction. Would something like block scheduling be considered if there was a large concern about shortening of class period time? And there you go.
Well, I, that could have an impact. I think I very shared with you in one of my updates, we, we ran into a little bit of a snag with the block schedule that we're currently doing now, so that would have to be something that we would work out with the teachers' union. But I, I see where you're going. I think that potentially could capture that more instructional time, and especially, like you said, for the science classes, when you are doing a lab, because it takes time to set up, do the experiment, and then, you know, clean up before the next group comes in. So, but that's something that potentially could be impact, but I think that would be something that we would have to put in with our negotiations with the teachers' unit as we get ready to start them up sometime down the road here.
Thank you, Melissa. Director Barlow.
Yes, couple quick observations, comments. I think we have a wonderful opportunity. The pandemic has brought us to a place of where we can begin to consider educational reform and innovation, which potentially even filters into this discussion of instructional time and learning outcomes. I would like to perhaps hear from, with, if the Director of Curriculum and Instruction is available, I've not yet done the research, I will later, to see what the optimum timeframe is. As board members, we're speaking from what we think, what we feel, what we believe, what we want, what we desire. I actually would like to know what the science says. I happen to believe science matters. But that being said, that would be useful in this broad discussion. Additionally, you know, I don't want to give the impression to the viewing public or to anyone else that every time we have the discussion, we kind of, you know, ignore everything that's been presented that we actually asked for, and then we want something else. So just an observation, I would, like I say, I'm not going to put the onus on CNI to come up with research efforts I can undertake, but I think that would be useful. We're then dealing with a known versus this nebulous, "Well, I think the ideal instructional period consists of this or that," and we will actually have the science to back up of the that. Thank you.
So Superintendent, do you have any ideas? Is there some best case for secondary students in terms of class length? I'm sure it's a variety, but...
Yeah, no, I'm not real familiar with that, and I don't, but that's something that we could look into. But I do want to say, I think Dawn brings up a great point, and I think we're starting to learn this right now through our distance learning. And I think one of the positives that's going to come out of this, I believe, is that we're going to see that we can do school differently. And all of us that are probably in this meeting right now are thinking of when we were in school, seat time. You have to spend so many minutes in that desk in order to get educated. And I think what we're going to find out, and probably some are already finding out, is that I may not need that entire 52-minute block of time. I mean, there, I think in Melissa's example, I think, you know, if I'm doing a lab, that 52 minutes is going to be important to have. But when I'm not doing a lab, I probably don't need that 50 minutes of sitting and talking to the kids for the entire 52 minutes. And I think what teachers are finding out now is that I do some instruction and then turn it over to the kids and maybe do some group work or whatever. So I think, I know that doesn't really directly answer Dawn's question, but I do think he does bring up a point that I think we're going to learn, that we can do school differently and probably better for our kids than the way we were taught in high school and middle school.
Thank you, Superintendent, and especially thank you for putting an optimistic spin on our current reality. I'm going to go to Director Workman, and then back to Director Marvin, and we're going to hope everything goes okay for her. So go ahead, Julie.
Yeah, thank you. So I asked earlier about the ABC lunch and option C and D, and that the 50-minute lunch actually functions as a, a class period slot. So if we were to reduce that period, or that lunch period to 36 minutes, we would either have one 36-minute class for kid to take, and all the other ones would still be 50 minutes or longer, which doesn't make any sense. So I think we need to keep that in mind. But back to the original question of, when do we start school? I'm absolutely supportive of starting high school and middle school sometime in the 9:00 area, and elementary starting at 8:00. And we have fabulous teachers. I know I, I had the honor of working with them for many years. We have great administrators, and when they work together, they can solve problems. And they've had a lot of experience doing that now during distance flow, distance learning in this time of COVID. And I have complete faith and confidence in them that they are going to be able to solve this problem, and that, you know, we don't really need to be trying to do that at the board table. But at the same time, I think that still these questions have to be at least addressed somewhat, because it will help our understanding in how to move forward with whichever option we finally land on, or perhaps a totally different option. I'm not suggesting that I have one, because I don't at this point, but that's all I have to say for the moment.
If I could comment on the...
Go ahead, Kathy.
Reduction of the lunch and option C and D, if you would reduce that down to what's shown in option A and B. He did have, the high school principal that was on our committee didn't come up with a creative plan with that 36-minute lunch, where you have the three lunches, and two of them are a period, and one of them is your lunch. So you actually have a longer period during your lunchtime, or in between your lunchtime, with the three lunches. So it was a real creative schedule that he did come up on that.
Thank you. Director Marvin, nice to have you back.
Okay. I don't know if you can hear me, and maybe you don't care, but there is science and research about efficacy in education, and the research shows that first and last is most effective. So the beginning of the class, the end of the class, that's the most important. It's not so much about how many minutes, it's about how you start and how you end. And I don't know that we need to have every class be the same number of minutes. This district has, for decades, had different schedules in different schools. One day is one thing, the next day's the next thing. But we get it that our staff can figure out what works best to deliver education to our kids, and they can figure out the lunch minutes. So there is the science that determines first and last, and not so much how many. For a science lab, you need more time for students to be able to do the work. For something like math, maybe fewer minutes, but more days in a row. So I really believe our teachers can figure that out.
Thank you, Director Marvin. It's nice to see you and hear you. It's nice to see you and hear you. Looks like, I think we're back to Director Nathan.
So everybody's talking about their priority lists. I would agree with Director Workman that that nine o'clock start time for secondary is appealing. I just don't think 8:20 is late enough, especially with what Mr. Kappers has said about the early drop-offs that will still have kids, high school kids being dropped off in that early morning time, which may negate some of the later time impacts. And then when I think about the instructional time, you know, we heard those middle school teachers talk about how students are smarter than we thought that they were. They're adapting to some of this independent work. So in order for me to understand the instructional time, that's what the state tells us, that we have to have our kids in the building, right? That's the minimum time. But if we were, in terms of reimagining education, is it unreasonable for us to say, we're going to spend less time in the building, but we're going to be putting more responsibility for you at home, either in preparation for the classes? And maybe we're facilitating that by getting closer to being a one-to-one district with the technology. But I don't know what the educational philosophy is on that.
I'll jump in it. Right now, we would not be allowed to count time that they're at home. We're able to do it now during the pandemic. That's why we can count the distance learning minutes. I agree with you, Kathy, and I told the governor this directly when he was at JM. I said, you know, you keep pushing us to be innovative in education, but some of the restrictions you put on us are back when I was in school. So we would, I don't believe the way the statute's written now, we would be able to count the time that they're home as minutes because the statute's written as, unfortunately, it's written as physically in the building, except for right now during the pandemic, they're letting us count the time that they're home.
Okay. Director Workman.
I know, I'm going into the weeds and I'm going to stay there for a minute. And that is, I mean, and some teachers are already doing this to a certain extent, is the flipped classroom where the students, when they're in class, they get more hands-on time, they get their questions asked, and they actually view the lesson or whatever you want to call it at home. So I could see even, it wouldn't count necessarily as their time meeting the minutes that are required by the state, but their homework and their class, how can I say this? What is now normally homework would be done in class, and they would have the opportunity then to have a video or whatever with a flipped learning. I mean, that's just another possibility. And as Jean said earlier, you know, we don't have to figure out all this tonight. I don't think we're in the position where we can do that. And I have full faith and confidence in our teaching staff. They're absolutely wonderful with the creativity that they have managed to find so far in distance learning and the opportunity to try all kinds of new things. So I hope that this can continue once we return to in-school person full-time, whenever that time might come.
Okay, I'm going to, I have, I see a couple more hands. I'm not cutting you off. I'm just giving you the timeframe that we've been discussing for an hour. So Director Amundson and then Director Nathan.
To go back to the question about seat time and the state statute. So Director Nathan had asked, you know, would it be reasonable for us to expect that more of the work be done, you know, on your own time at home remotely, whatever, you know, configuration? And I heard the answer, which was remote time and at-home time don't count. But if we were to say, you know, we were backing up the number of instructional minutes in school to a point where it was still above the state minimum, but we were to say to our staff and our students and our families, our expectation is that you will spend just as much time as you always have been on your work. And just because you're in school, fewer minutes, hours, depending on if you're counting them by day or by year, we would be losing seat time, but we wouldn't be losing instructional time, if that makes sense? Because my concern is if we were, if we were meeting every student's needs right now with the amount of time that they spend in school, I would be a lot more comfortable backing up on how long our day is, how much seat time we have. But we're not meeting all of our kids' needs, and it seems the reverse of what we should be doing, to be spending less time with our kids. So again, if I could be reassured in some way that we would address the instructional time loss in some other way, then I would be more comfortable moving ahead. And then to address what Chair Seelinger just said about, you know, we might want to think about wrapping this up, is this a good time for us to be talking about which option we're all leaning towards? Chair Seelinger, is that, are we still in the question phase?
I'm sorry, Chair Seelinger is no longer with us.
Okay.
Ms. Marvin, can you answer that question?
I cannot, and I hope one day, when you say she's not, that doesn't mean she's succumbed to something. Oh, she's back!
She's working on coming back.
Okay, so there's that. And.
Well, because I'll just follow up on my question while Chair Seelinger is logging back in. You know, I am very interested in hearing if we have any kind of consensus over a particular model of A, B, C, or D. And, you know, then maybe we can narrow our focus if we all know that we're looking at one model or another. I saw Chair Seelinger nodding, but it wasn't at me, was it?
Are you asking for a straw poll or something? Is that what?
Well, I'm just thinking we might be able to narrow our focus a bit if we knew we were all on the same page. So it's up to you what you want to do, but that's what I'm curious about right now. I don't want to cut off the questions.
I understand. All right, let me see who I got in the queue here. Director Nathan and, oh, Schlusner, I haven't heard, can we go to Mark and then Kathy, please? Thank you.
It might yourself be a bit more brief than most folks. Is, you know, again, the studies have shown it needs to be post 8:30, which two of these four are, which I think is great. And it was also good to hear from the superintendent that education is being reevaluated, how it's done. So it would be interesting to hear not only what Rochester is thinking of, but learning what MDE is thinking of, that do think there's ample opportunities to reimagine how education is going on, where it could be a combination of hybrid and in-school learning. I think there's great opportunities here that could happen, as long as MDE realizes that as well and adjusts, of course, legislation to allow us to do what we need to do for what's best for our students.
Thanks, Mark. Kathy.
So Mr. Sheridan, you brought up the possibility of the board giving more leeway to allowing you to look at less instructional time. So if we did allow you to even go with less instructional time than in the options, which of the cons in the options do you think that would address? Would it allow us to, for example, leave high school earlier? Do you have any on the list that you could highlight for us?
I think you hit it right on the nail, right on the head with that, reducing the end time of the high school. And I know Jeff Whitney's chomping at the bit to be able to discuss the impact that a 4:12 or later or a 4 o'clock or later dismissal time at a high school, the impact that that would have for a large number of students. Jeff, do you want to, here's your opportunity, Jeff.
Yep, we're ready for you, Jeff.
Hi.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. Obviously, anything after 4 o'clock or even later than 4 o'clock, some of those options are later than 4 o'clock. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm only laughing because I haven't seen you with a beard. I was like, you barely look like the same person. I'm sorry. It was like.
This COVID, you go into hiding, obviously, so beards are, I guess that's what happens. Obviously, you know, the 4 o'clock, not only student athletes, you know, student athletes are going to be affected by the 4 o'clock, but I think the other thing to remember is there's a lot of teacher-coaches. And so any dismissal time after, you know, 4 o'clock, you're going to have a lot of substitutes at the end of the day for events that are on the road. And I think the other thing probably too is many events, like I'll use in the spring, start at 4:30. And so you'd be getting out of, you'd be getting out of school for a home event or an event in Rochester over at Century or, you know, at John Marshall. So, and that includes the coach and the teachers, and a lot of our coaches are middle school teachers. A lot of our coaches, obviously, are high school teachers and a handful are, you know, elementary teachers. So I think, you know, obviously, it would be a huge paradigm shift if, you know, for athletics to be dismissed that late. I know a lot of the other schools in our conference or a number of them have gone to later start times, and a lot of their dismissal time is in that 3:30 range, which, you know, is workable with athletics, where you can minimize, for instance, those short trips to Winona, to Austin, to, you know, even Albert Lee, about an hour. Some of those, those trips, Red Wing, are 45 minutes. You can pretty much make those trips and not get anybody out of class, pretty much, for those trips in most start times for athletics in the spring and the fall. But anything after 4 o'clock, you're, every event that you traveled on the road, you would be dismissing kids from that last hour of the day or more. If you're going to Mankato, the Twin Cities for section games, those kids would be missing multiple class periods, depending on what kind of schedule you were in at the end of the day. So, you know, you're looking at instructional time, you're looking at how many kids are affected, you're talking each season anywhere from 500 to 650 kids that are affected at the end of the day unless we were created with some kind of a, you know, a Spartan hour or a John Marshall hour, Rocket Hour or something like that, that created some openings for athletes at the end of those days. And, you know, I could probably go into all kinds of other dominoes that would fall. Obviously, you've been meeting for a long time, but it, just being in athletics for many years, knowing what, you know, a lot of ADs have done over the course of time to get the right, what I would call the sweet spot for when events in every season should start due to, you know, sun and no lights and all different facilities that we have. A lot of the start times of athletic events have been moved one way or another to get into that sweet spot. If you go any later and you're coming home from Mankato and now all of a sudden they're getting back at 1:00 in the morning, then we get issues on the other end. So we've moved them around, I know in my career many times, to be in a spot where, you know, I think if you were in that 3:30 range, we'd probably, you know, could make it work with, you know, less impact. But if you were in the 4 o'clock range, you would have to expect a major impact on extracurriculars, not just athletics, but other things that would be starting practice later in the day, pushing facilities back that we're using, therefore pushing youth activities way late in the evening. Obviously, they wouldn't get into those elementary schools for basketball practices till later in the evening. So I think that's probably, you know, a summary of, it would be a tough thing to manage, but, you know, obviously, if you're, you know, you're going to accept some of that, then, you know, those kids would be affected in a way that's probably detrimental when it comes to class time.
Thank you, Mr. Whitney. Appreciate it. So where are we at? What would you, what is the appetite for the board? What is, is there appetite for, is there anything else administration would like to know, would like us to know or how best to move forward? Director Nathan.
This is a process question. So at some point in the conversation, I think Mr. Sheridan said that, well, he said that we can't cost this out until we have some specifics and it, there's a cost to costing it out. And that if we could give them one or two, then they could really dig in to see what the cost is. Did I hear that right?
You did, yes.
So the way this agenda item is set up is as a briefing item with four different options plus a reject them all. So how, if the board chose to say, we have, we've narrowed it down, so we can't make a decision until we see some of that more in-depth information, how do we do that?
Well, I think if you can narrow it down to maybe two, and if it's just the cost of transportation we're bringing back, that's fine. But if we're going to continue rehashing some of the same things that we've been for the last several meetings, I would suggest we not do that. But if you find two that you're kind of supportive of, but you don't know what they're going to cost, I think we could invest the money into saying C and B or whatever. I just grabbed two of them. Option B and C, here's what it's going to cost, and then you could make a decision on which one of the two or neither that you want to do.
Thank you. Julie.
Yeah, I liked Melissa's suggestion earlier of taking some kind of a straw poll. Yes, yes, straw poll, so that we're not just, you know, spinning our wheels again and we leave the meeting and I'm thinking, I have no idea where we are. So, you know, that's up to you as chair, as to whether or not you would like to do that.
So I can see doing this several ways. None of them, I don't have any invested, I'm just thinking out loud. I sort of see the, you know, A and B are kind of of a piece and C and D are kind of of a piece. So we could kind of split them like, if today was the day, I would lean more towards AB versus CD. Or we could do some sort of prioritization between the four options individually and then see where we land, like, you know, everybody was, everybody liked A and D, and so those two would go forward. Thoughts, Melissa? Go ahead.
I don't know how everybody else's list of preferences are, but for me, I have one from AB list and one from CD list. So your first suggestion wouldn't work very well for me. But maybe we could go with our favorite and an alternate that's still okay or something like that? I don't know.
That's fine. Director Marvin.
I'm wondering if we could email to the board chair our one or two candidates to consider at the next meeting in October and that from that, the board chair would present, these are the ones that seem to be the most.
Right, right. These are the top two or whatever. Director Barlow.
Well, what I'm hearing is, and I heard this perhaps an hour or so ago, Mr. Sheridan had asked us to come up with two. He didn't categorize them one way or another, grouped them one way or another. He said if we could at least do that, it would be useful. And I'm hearing that that's what we're kind of leaning toward. So I'm anxiously waiting the opportunity to offer my one or two.
Okay. Director Amundson? Another thought?
I personally wouldn't be in favor of the emailing part. I think it should be done in an open meeting and so that we can all hear each other's perspectives because that helps guide or reinforce mine or gives me new things to consider.
Okay. Director Barlow, I'm going to call on you because you said you were ready. I have a little chart in front of me, so. So would you tell me between A, B, C, and D, what would be your top one and two?
Okay, B would probably be one and D would probably be two.
Thank you. Would someone else like to go next?
I can.
Great, thank you.
I'm leaning towards C. I'm not a fan of D because I think it goes too late. And then the second one is, I think B is better than A because A, the middle school, is still really super early.
Okay, thank you. Next, Mark. I see your picture.
Pretty much what Melissa said, C. And then while B may not be post-8:30, it is probably close enough because D is too late.
Okay, great. Next. Director Nathan, I see your face.
Add me to the list of my first choice being C and my second choice being B.
Thank you. Next. Julie, can you go? Because that's actually in order, oh, I brought everybody down, so that would be swell.
Yes, 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 yes. My first choice is C. I guess I shouldn't say that my second choice is C also. B, I, 8:20 is not late enough. And the sleep experts say 8:30 is the very earliest. And I know 10 minutes doesn't sound like much, but it is when you're trying to drag a high school kid out of bed. So C, B, very reluctantly.
Okay, thank you. Jean?
Yeah, and I'm thinking C, first choice, B, second choice.
Okay. You know, folks, I, I probably am in the, in similar between C and B. And it just makes it easier. Don, Don, you're our only outlier with D as number two, but.
No, I just wanted to get the ball rolling.
You were, you did great, Don. I really appreciate it. Kathy, you can't change your vote. What is it?
Not, not changing my vote, but wondering if, along with option C, there was a conversation about the permission to look at wiggle room if we gave them an option to look at less instructional time. If that's something we have to consent on or not.
Yep, thank you. And I'll circle back to that in just a second. Superintendent or Mr. Sheridan, do you want anything to say after our straw-ish poll?
Well, based on your straw poll, C and B, so is the, do you want us to come back and bring the cost for both of those? Transportation costs? Is that what the board is asking?
I believe so. Director Amundson?
Would we be able to bring the transportation cost, or I should say an estimate, along with, you know, if we listed any major stumbling blocks that we see whether or not in two weeks there were any, any ways to allay our fears? I mean, I'm just thinking it might help the, the staff to help move this forward if we knew that our concerns could be addressed. I mean, it's, I'll, I'll give you an example. Like I said, is childcare really a super huge thing? Are we really worried about it or can it be addressed? And the answer to me was it could be addressed. If we listed any of those that we hadn't gotten addressed yet, it might help us be prepared to actually vote and move forward when we get the costs. Unless that's too much of a to-do list for staff, in which case I understand that.
I guess I'm not sure what you're asking us to do. Are you, are you asking us if there's any additional cons or pros that we think of that we haven't mentioned tonight to bring those forward?
Well, I, I had mentioned, you know, I was a little concerned about instructional time. There's some issues like block scheduling or reducing lunch or any other creative things. So if we were each able to list anything that would, you know, totally dissuade us from moving to that option and you were able to address each idea and say, we think we've got it under, you know, we've got it covered. Or maybe that would be something better done by email.
Well, I think, I guess it just depends on how many additional questions every board member is going to ask. I mean, I think part of, like, some of the things have been said tonight. I mean, do we really, should we really be having a conversation about lunchtime? Probably not. I think most of you agreed that teachers and administration can figure out a schedule in between the time slot that you all agree to. Yeah, I get, I mean, it's up to, Deborah, it's up to you on how you, if you want to, you know, I mean, I guess that's our current practice in a way. So if agenda items, you can submit questions. So that would be just like what we normally do.
Yeah. Let me get a few others and circle back. Director Workman?
Yeah, I'm just really surprised because C and B are so totally different. So I would just like to take B off of my second choice. I only have one choice, make it C. I can't support elementary schools starting at 9:30 in the morning. It's, it, the research doesn't support it.
Okay, thank you. Director Slusner?
Just a quick cough, or a quick note on transportation costs. When we would be looking for implementation of this plan is about the same time as we'll be bringing new schools online, which is about the same time we'll be changing boundaries and the entire transportation model is going to be changing as well. So while I'm sure staff can come up with an awesome estimate, do keep in mind it's going to be very short-lived.
Yep, got it. Okay, so this, so I'm recapping because, you know, I like to recap. It looks like option C has pretty good support for some further inquiry. Option B has some, except for Director Workman thinks 9:30 is too late, which is fine. We're looking for some transportation cost numbers, is what it sounds like. I also think, and I don't know if it's, if it helps to put, put it in these terms, but really, are there any, are there any non-negotiables? And again, maybe this is beyond our capacity to pop out right now. But, you know, we don't want, we don't want all this work to go in and then somebody says, oh, yeah, well, I, I don't want to spend $500,000 on transportation or I don't want to spend $200,000 on transportation. So I think it is, would be respectful of us if, and even though that might just be one person, right, who has that in mind, but we might want to share anything for the good of the cause. And if it's a, you know, we don't want to go below X amount of minutes. I don't think anybody's prepared to say that necessarily. We don't want to go below six, seven class periods plus whatever that is. But just anything else that for administration to consider or not consider, I think now is the time to share. Director Amundson?
That's a great, a great question because that's what I was just going to share. I, I think it's difficult for us to say what cost we would or wouldn't go over because we won't know the cost until we finish this process of costing it out. But that being said, you know, you threw a couple of numbers out there. $300,000, I think we could manage. A whole lot more than that would give me a whole lot of concern. But I think there would be ways to address increased costs. That, the seven-period thing you mentioned, if it, if it completely disallows a student from being able to take both a foreign language and a music class in the same year because music classes are usually what become that seventh choice, then that would be a non-negotiable for me because I think that's one of, you know, the great things about our school district is the, the rich variety of options we offer our students. I am concerned about childcare. I wouldn't call it a non-negotiable, but again, that would be one of my issues that if I can be reassured about. And my, my list of priorities also included safety, but I think those safety issues have been fairly well addressed. If there were any surprises that came out when costing the, the bus times and we had a lot of little kids waiting for the bus in the dark for a long time, that would concern me. But, you know, if it's a very small number of students affected, I think we could be creative and address those concerns individually.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything to add to wrap this up? I'm giving you the nudge. Nine o'clock.
Since you, you asked for those non-negotiables, I'm going to add what Director Amundson said about if the, if the decrease in instructional time at the high school limits the options for students to take a world language and music, I would also be concerned about that because I think that's part of what makes our district stand out.
Thank you. Director Workman?
Yes, I know we've already had two people say this, but you're interested. I think it bears repeating just exactly what Director Nathan said now.
Thank you. Superintendent Munoz?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure if we're going to be able to answer that question, to be honest with you. Until kids actually sign up for courses and the high schools actually develop a schedule, I, we may not be able to have an answer for that. So I just want to caution that we may not be able to provide an answer to that.
Okay, thank you. All right. Scott, did we help?
Oh, somewhat. And I know we're on a schedule where you'd like this back in two weeks, but I need to defer to Jeff because your two weeks is actually my 10 days or less.
Right, yep.
Jeff, can this even be completed in the next two weeks?
And if it's not, I think that's, that's fine. I don't, yes, I see Melissa nodding. We, we are on your timetable, not ours, because we are asking for more information. Director Workman?
Would it be simpler, Scott, if you just came back with one of those cost options next time? Since C was the most, seemed to be the most popular choice? So you didn't have to do both of them at the same time? And depending on the numbers that you come up with, that might inform us as to whether or not we wanted to go through with more information on B?
Yeah, again, I got to go back to Jeff. Jeff, can you weigh in? Is this possible to get done?
Well, I, I think, given all we've got going and we're going to, we need to start planning for the next phase possibly too. We may have to lead on our, on our TransFinder services as a consultant for, to see what their timeline is. So we could work on that starting tomorrow, Scott, and to see what, what their timeline would look like.
You know, your, your timeline is the one that has to work. So I'm, I'm not intending to impose something that's just, just not possible. I'd rather have you do it well and have it take longer than give us something just because we want it right now.
Superintendent?
Yes, I, I guess I need to ask this question. So is the expectation that where, if we end up changing start times, that we implement it for the '21-'22 school year? So we can't drag this out too much longer. We need to make a decision one way or the other. So I, we got to keep that timeline in line as well because once we do change, then we need to give Jeff and his people time to run all of the routes and do that. So let's keep that in line in mind as well.
Correct. Director Nathan, did you have something else?
Only circling back to the instructional hours question, whether we've, so we've set option C and B with the times that we have in the option, but if we were to give them permission to decrease instructional time, those end times might change. So are we saying that that's part of what we're expecting to see when something comes back?
Is everyone okay, is everyone open to, I'm going to go to you next just a second, Melissa. Is everyone open to looking at instructional time adjustments? Melissa's shaking her head no. Do you want to say something else?
I wanted clarification from Director Nathan. Decreasing instructional times on which proposal? All of them? Any of them?
From what I, from what I heard when I asked my question, it would be decreasing instructional time at the high school level in order to allow for an earlier dismissal in option C.
I think instructional time is already a horrible loss in option C. So I would be outspokenly opposed to decreasing it further. Unless we were able to talk about factors that could mitigate it like we already discussed earlier this evening.
And I, my hand isn't raised, but I think the instructional time should be something that our secondary teachers absolutely have to weigh into because it's not the number of minutes, it's the quality of the minutes. So. And Director Workman's shaking her head too, so there's that. Okay.
Okay. So it seems like there is, there is not consensus about instructional time, although there is a little bit of concern. Is that enough information to give you, Mr. Sheridan? He's, you're so kind to smile and nod at me at 9:07 PM.
I, I'll take that one, Scott. Okay. I, I guess if we're really going to spend time doing, making a perimeter visit, two minutes, I, I mean, what we don't want to do is spend all this time doing one and you say, well, can you bring back three minutes versus two minutes? So, you know, if the consensus is that you're giving us some lead weight to cut, cut instruction time, I, I guess I'm just getting concerned that the more we keep having all these meetings, the window will be time when the decision's made and then we actually have to implement it for the '21-'22 school year. So I, I want us to be cautious of that. But I'm a little confused because I, I thought we eliminated B. Did we not eliminate B or was B still on the table? Because I thought somebody said they didn't want, we didn't have to cost out B anymore.
I think that was Julie's suggestion and Julie is the one who really dislikes B.
Well, no, I was, my suggestion to Scott was, would it be easier for him if he just came back now or as soon as possible with C and see where we go from there and then come back with B rather than having to do both of those at once? And Scott answered my question. So whatever works for you.
Yes, Melissa.
The mute lag again. My concern with that would be if we're costing something out and at the same time we're in a hurry to make a decision so we can get moving. If we cost only one thing out, it comes back at a cost that we, we don't feel comfortable with, aren't we then back to the drawing boards? So I'm, I'm okay with only costing one thing out as long as we all understand that if it comes up with a large price tag, it might slow the process down more. I can go either way, whichever would make this go faster as long as we all understand that we're not being locked in to C or nothing if it's a large price tag.
I, I, I don't know.
I don't either.
I don't, I don't think we know and I think we're starting to circle the drain. So let's do this. Let's close this discussion. I think we have given administration as much feedback as we possibly can this evening. I know that they are working super diligently. And so I think even within a couple of days, if something starts to kind of become apparent, like this isn't working or we don't have enough information, at least we can circle back through, superintendent can send an email or exec can take a look at it next Monday and see if we can, to see if we can figure out a best way to move forward. My, I, I do, I do have concerns that, you know, costing will be done and we will come back and there'll be another round of questions and there'll be another list of the non-negotiables or, you know, not having consensus. And then we're just going to keep kicking the can down the road. So at some point, we need to relieve the pressure on our administration to keep looking at this and we need to relieve the pressure on our. this, and we need to relieve the pressure on our community that we make a decision. So and then maybe also included in that, administration can give us a timeline, say, you know, if you guys haven't decided by pick a date, it's not happening. And that's, you know, basically that's on you, board members. We need to take responsibility for not making a decision in a timely manner. Director Workman?
I just wanna thank Scott particularly and also Mike for at least looking like they're patient in working with us on this. I really appreciate that and all the time they have spent working on this issue and trying to bring back the information to the board that that we need in order to solve this. So greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks also to Mr. Whitney for hanging in there with us and Mr. Cappers. Thank you so much. I'm gonna move us forward. 7.04 Authorization to Purchase Instructional Technology Devices. This is a briefing item, Superintendent.
Yes, Mr. John Carlson, Executive Director of Finance, and Heather Nestler, Executive Director of Communication, Marketing and Technology, will brief us on this agenda item.
Great. Good evening, School Board. Superintendent, I'm here to ask for the second phase of our coronavirus relief fund spending. Last time, we were here asking for permission to purchase student devices, Chromebooks specifically. This time, we are wanting to make sure that all of our teachers, about 1,500 that we have, are given the opportunity to have a new laptop, so if they need to juggle between work at home or work remote during distance learning, that they have appropriate technology. Most of our teachers are only given a desktop computer that's in their classroom, so this would help address the mobile component in case it's needed throughout the school year. We, these are on state contracts, so we don't need to run a sealed bid process, means that's already been done by the state of Minnesota, so we're buying off that contract. The devices are 1,150 each, so multiply that by 1,500 and it comes to 1,725,000. We did get confirmation that they have 500 of these in stock that could be shipped out tomorrow morning and then another thousand by probably 10 days or so. So these would come much faster than the Chromebooks that we are waiting for. So if possible, we'd like you to move this to action tonight.
Director Marvin?
In there, done that, absolutely. No questions. Move it to action.
Do I have a second to move it to action?
Second, Amundson.
Okay. Any discussion about moving it to action? I see you, Mr. Schlesner, so just, I'm just trying to keep you, I'm trying to keep Robert's rules. Any discussion about moving it to action? We can come back to you. Hearing none, we're gonna take a vote on moving this to action.
Ms. Amundson?
Aye.
Mr. Barlow?
Aye.
Ms. Marvin?
Aye.
Ms. Nathan?
Aye.
Mr. Schlesner?
Aye.
Ms. Workman?
Aye.
Chair Seilingur?
Aye.
Thank you. It is now an action item. I'll read the resolution. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby authorize the purchase of 1,500 HP SB Elite Book 840G7 from CDW-G in the amount of $1,725,000 to be funded by the Federal Coronavirus Relief Fund. I need a motion and a second and then discussion.
Motion. Move approval, Workman?
Did you get Workman and Schlesner on there? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Discussion, Mr. Schlesner.
One question, one comment. Comment is, these are really nice devices at a pretty decent price, but they're definitely really nice devices. The one question I'd have for you, John, is since we are using the money that we're receiving for this, does this relieve our budget down the road for technology replacement? Since these are all new devices?
I would say temporarily, but it may leave to lead to an unintended consequence of not being able to have the money to replace them in six years from now, and maybe Superintendent might wanna say something about that.
Yeah, our, Mark, our current practice has been when we replace the student devices, then those devices get handed down to teachers. So unless there's some additional funding, you know, when we get time to replace the teacher ones, we would have to go back to our past practice of when students get new ones, then we'd pass those down to staff.
Sure, which makes sense. And these devices should work awesome with Google.
Thanks, Mark. All right, so let's have Ms. Edgar call the roll. Question, vote.
Ms. Amundson?
Aye.
Mr. Barlow?
Aye.
Ms. Marvin?
Aye.
Ms. Nathan? Mr. Schlesner?
Aye.
Chair Seilingur?
Aye.
Ms. Workman?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, moving on. 7.06 COVID-19 Extra Costs and Savings. This is an information item, Superintendent.
Yes, Mr. John Carlson, Executive Director of Finance, will provide this information for us tonight.
Great, thank you again. I had talked about the last time I gave you an update that I'd come back in September and kinda do this maybe monthly here for a little bit, just so you understand what's going on with the pandemic and extra costs and and some savings that we're experiencing because of it. These numbers are current as of September 9th, and this time I did put in the attachment in board docs, the actual printouts right from Skyward, so you could cross-reference that if you wanna see a little bit more detail. Again, some of these numbers are right on to the penny because we are able to track them with different codes in Skyward as we're spending. And then some of them are estimates, and some of these estimates I did not change from June because I was just kinda trying to get caught up with the end of the fiscal year. And then I also wanna say that the numbers I tell you tonight don't include the million dollars of Chromebooks that we ordered last board meeting or the 1,725 of laptops we just ordered for our teachers. I won't go through too many of these to hopefully save some time, but I'm just going to point out a couple of the bigger ones. So like the curriculum and instruction, we did pay people that participated in that task force, they were payday stipend, and so that cost about $45,000 for those days we were meeting in the summer. We have used extra cleaning services, that would be under operations and maintenance under contracted services, about $35,000, and then extra supplies and materials that had been purchased and paid for at the time of this report, about $70,000, and then health and safety, those are ones that are more student-based in our supplies, so we kinda segregated those out. Health and safety are for students, other ones are more for staff. And then I did put up the note there that $1,167,000 is encumbered, meaning we are going to spend the money on that. However, we just haven't gotten the invoice and paid for the items yet. And as we've talked about with the coronavirus relief fund, most of that is the Chromebooks that we're gonna submit to the federal government for reimbursement and then, of course, the teacher laptops. Our unemployment bill was $455,000 higher than normal. That was through June 30th. Again, we we did not lay off our employees, but some of our employees claimed unemployment, maybe through their second job. And so the way the proration works, they look at who paid the wages, and so the school district is partially responsible for that. And that's gonna affect our levy, too, and I'm gonna talk to you about that in another item here in a few minutes. Money that we did give back was, so we refunded our spring athletics and activities fees, so that cost us $207,000 of revenue. These numbers I did not change from the last time, but these are some of the savings, like on sub-teachers, sub-para's, travel, coaches, athletic officials, because the games weren't happening, so on and so forth. We saved money on our utility bills because we were able to keep our buildings more like they were at nighttime temperatures. So actually, the biggest thing that changed in here from last time was in third-party billing revenues. When I had been doing some estimating, we were way behind in that, and so I assumed that was because of the pandemic. As it turned out later in the summer, we did collect more money than we had budgeted in third-party billing, so I've taken that lost revenue off this report. And so once I did that, we're actually sitting at a savings right now, about $19,000. So in other words, it's pretty negligible as of right now, what the pandemic has cost the general fund. Again, the the bigger dollars that are still out there that are encumbered, we do plan to submit as part of the coronavirus relief fund, so, you know, there'll be revenue to support that after we pay the bills.
Super. Well, thank you so much for keeping on top of that. Oh, are you sorry?
Yep, I think that's it, so.
Okay. Any any quick questions for Mr. Carlson on his information item? We know that we can always reach John via the superintendent if anything else comes up, so thank you for that, Mr. Carlson. 7.07 Approval of Proposed School District Property Tax Levy Payable 2021. This is a briefing item, Superintendent.
Yes, Mr. John Carlson, Executive Director of Finance, will brief us on this item tonight.
All right, I'm gonna try and share the right screen here again. All right. I will say to kick this off before I get into this, that MDE is updating their system right now, and so this has probably been the most frustrating year of getting the levy ready to you. On top of that, this is the earliest we've had our second board meeting in the month because the first one was on the first and this one's on the 15th. And so we have been scrambling for days here, a week, literally trying to get the levy corrected and updated with things we know that MDE has done wrong in it. And so if you look at the attachments that I've got in there, in board docs, there are estimates this time instead of actuals, because the actual report that MDE produced is not accurate. And so we're gonna have to live with that because we don't have another board meeting yet this month to give MDE some more time to correct that, but it should be corrected by the time this item comes back to you on October 6th. At least that's what I'm hoping, that they've made all the corrections by then. So just in general, the property tax levy, there's three buckets of funding for the general fund, the community ed fund, and the debt service fund. Most of the levy is determined right by state law, so it's based on pupil units or it's on approved expenditures that MDE can look at and set the levy accordingly. If the taxpayers want to pay more, if the school board want desires more funding to run the school district, they have to go to the voters for three different reasons. They can run an operating referendum for general operating funds, they could do a building bond referendum like we did last year, where you get money to either build new facilities or remodel your current facilities, and then you can do a capital projects referendum, which most districts are using for technology purposes. And our district does not have the technology referendum right now. Who pays the property tax? So it's our homeowners, the apartment owners, the farmers, businesses, we all contribute to paying into the district's property tax levy. And the amount each business or home pays is based on state law, and it's spread out by the county assessor based on the value of each property. And we don't get to control the value of the properties, therefore, we don't get to really control the taxing rate. What we get to do is we get to set the amount of the levy and we get to say, for example, we need $60 million, and if that's within the calculation, then that's the maximum levy can be, and it really doesn't matter if there's new houses, new businesses, we're just saying what the dollar amount is. As I said, the the levy is spread across the tax base. Last year, the tax base was $15 billion. This next year, it's gonna be $16.1 billion, an increase of about seven and a half percent. That does not mean the district gets seven and a half percent more money. What it means, and it's really that key line there called new construction, so about $300 to $350 million of new construction. So those will be new properties, never taxed before, that the levy will be spread out against, and that in effect, if the dollars were the same, if if the levy were the same by the school district, taxes would go down for other people because there's new businesses, new homes that are now paying for the first time. So this is where I believe the levy sorts out, where MDE and I are not in agreement right now based on their report, but I believe once they get everything corrected, it's gonna come in at $68,676,000 in total, which is an increase of about 4.1% or $2.7 million compared to 2020. So what's causing it to go up $2.7 million this year? I had mentioned in the previous item about unemployment. The way the unemployment levy works is we are allowed to levy or set a property tax for the amount of unemployment insurance that we are paying or estimating to pay. If it doesn't come in at 1.9 million, there's an adjustment process that happens in the future. And so this is a substantial increase for the district. We've only been levying about $100,000 a year for the last few years, so to jump up to 1.9 million is just based on that one number I showed you before, that in one quarter, it went up $455,000 over the previous year. And so what we're trying to do is just catch it up and hope that that is enough to cover the next one year of unemployment levy. Again, if it comes in less than that, that's great news, there'll be an adjustment process off down the road, and taxes will go down and kind of in a sense, the money gets refunded back. We also had property tax abatements, that's just a technical term, too. There were some properties where the tax has been taken off. So say a business applied and they were turned into an exempt business, that kind of erases the tax on there. That's a little bit higher than normal, so that's $500,000 of the increase. And then part of our long-term capital plan that we've been talking about with our debt and our facilities maintenance, that accounts for about $400,000. So if you would've taken off those two kind of anomalies there, the top two big items, we probably would've had a levy that was going down in total dollars year over year. So what does 4.1% increase, because that'll probably be the number that hits the paper tomorrow, what does that mean to somebody? It means that you possibly will have an actual property tax decrease, even though the total district dollars would be collected, will be a higher number. And that's, again, a factor of those new construction properties. So those businesses, homes that will be paying in for the very first time next year are gonna absorb most of that 4.1% increase. In other words, the overall property tax levy of the district can go up, but the amount each homeowner pays in can actually go down, again, if you have a very healthy and growing tax base. So the timeline we have to hit here, we usually have to have the levy approved by law on September 30th or before. You can request a one-week extension through the home county auditor. I have done that for the district, so we have until October 7th to make a final decision on our preliminary levy. Again, as as you've been through this before, you know that what you said is the preliminary levy is the maximum you can have in December, when we actually get to approving it on December 15th, so it can't be more than that. We can certainly say, like, if that unemployment, if we feel like we should back that number down a little bit, we'll have the opportunity to do that still. So this is just the worst-case scenario. It's the number that will be used that goes out on the truth and taxation statements in November, when those are mailed to homeowners. And I guess that's where I'll leave it for questions at this point.
Super. Thank you, Mr. Carlson, as always. Questions, board members? Director Marvin?
So, Mr. Carlson, you said that the MDE, MDE is not always correct on this kind of thing, but you said that for the proposed tax levy that we're looking at right now, does it seem reasonable? Do you think it seems reasonable, and is your recommendation that we approve it or not?
So generally, I would say 4% in a growing district like ourselves is not that bad. And again, I, if had we not had that weird thing with unemployment, I'd be asking you I'd be asking you to approve a lesser amount than what our citizens are paying in this year. So, that would be very good news. I think it would be prudent to not approve this tonight, to let all the technical stuff sort itself out over the next couple of weeks. And then, we'll come back with hopefully firmed-up numbers that are accurate for October 6th meeting.
Great answer. Thank you.
So, this will, just to be clear, Mr. Carlson, this would come back, it's a briefing number, briefing item now, it will come back as an action item, not going to consent. It will still be a separate item, correct?
I think that's the best way to do it, because I do believe the numbers, you know, we might be adjusting off a few thousand dollars if we come to agreement on what the real calculation is.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Carlson? No hands raised? Board members, I'm going to allow us another quick recess. If you could return, please, by 9:37 or before, that would be swell. Thank you. And at 9:38 PM. Item 7.08, closing Fridale Middle School. This is an action item. I'm going to read the resolution. Then, we'll have a motion, move approval, a second, a vote, and then we will discuss. No, motion, second, discuss, vote. Here's a resolution. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby direct the administration to close Fridale Middle School as a district-wide option middle school at the end of the 2021-2022 school year. And be it further resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby direct the administration to repurpose the building currently known as Fridale Middle School into other educational space, beginning with the 2022-2023 school year. I need a move approval in a second before we can discuss.
Move approval, Marvin.
Second. Arlo.
Thank you. All right. Discussion, board members. Is there anything new to say, ask, before we vote? Director Marvin.
We've had several parents talk about their fealty to Fridale and to the wonderful work it's done and to the amazing staff that's there. And completely respect and honor that. And we have had parents and staff from the other middle schools talk about how much they honor and respect those schools and their loyalty and their love of the staff there. And I think that the kind of themes we've gotten is the importance of community and relationships and belonging and highly gifted programs at our middle schools and how much those mean. And I do believe that this district is completely dedicated to providing highly gifted programs for all our kids, no matter where they are, to the kind of relationships with staff and for every student feeling that they belong and that there are people who know them and care about them and welcome them. And I think personally, that maybe the time is us to move on from having Fridale being a choice school and for Fridale being a district building, because it's never been about the building. It's never been about the brick and mortar. It's always been about the culture in a middle school, because we know middle school is tough for all kids. But my thinking is, let's move the building of Fridale to a district school that is gonna serve different populations and no longer be just a middle school.
Thank you, Director Marvin. Would anyone else like to make any comments or ask any questions? Director Workman, I saw first.
Yes, I'll try to be brief. So, my question, it has to do with process. I understand that when this was first brought to us, we were not in a, in the condition that we are now with the pandemic. And we were not anticipating huge budget cuts this close, this close, within the next couple of years. So, I would still like to see this considered as a piece of a larger process in which we consider everything that we might need to reduce or eliminate. And that we still need to have a structure and a process for how we're going to proceed with a referendum. I know that this is not every, something that everybody is really interested in right now, but I'm very concerned that if we do not have the structure in place, that when the time comes, we're gonna just, we're gonna be caught short. So, to that end, I would like to see Fridale being put on the table with anything else. There aren't gonna be any changes in Fridale until the new middle school is opened, which will be two years from now. So, I don't see that there is going to be any advantage to the other programs that are currently in place. They're not gonna be able to move for two years anyway. So, that's just kind of where I'm at on this. It's a process question. Also, you know, there's some other things to consider, too, is the district-wide options in the context perhaps of a larger discussion about the budget or just philosophically, educationally, what we wanna do, as well as having more ideas about what we need to do with middle school in general. Do we need to be looking at that more closely, having an evaluation? I believe that Dr. Marvin suggested that at the last, one of our last meetings on there.
Thank you, Director Nathan, and then Director Amundson.
So, this has been a complicated discussion, because I'm very sensitive to the financial needs of the district. I think the, if anybody's still watching, the multitude of agenda items tonight that show the financial, the importance of being fiscally responsible is something that is important to the district, because we don't have a lot of, the term wiggle room has been used a lot tonight. We don't have a lot of wiggle room in our budget. And we do face some severe deficits coming up in the next few years. And I think the numbers that have been presented to us make it clear that it does cost more money to run Fridale, both on a per-student basis and the amount it would contribute on an ongoing basis to the budget. I agree that Wright-Fitt and Rail need better space. And I would, it would've been more comfortable during this conversation if we had spent more time on talking about the transition to what education looks like without a Fridale, than the conversation about the intentions and the philosophies of the parents who chose Fridale and trying to guess what they thought or what they didn't think. I think we've heard both ways in the feedback about Fridale from our community. We've certainly heard people who love the school, the middle school that they're at. And we have heard that people are unhappy with the larger middle school experience and have the perception that Fridale was getting something extra or special or unfairly benefited. And I don't know how to fight that perception going forward. And I don't think that it's a healthy perception going forward for our district. I think we have all seen how this pandemic is causing anxiety about education that I don't think is gonna go away when the virus goes away. And trust and that feeling of community, not just within a building or, not just within a building, but district-wide is going to be important. And if we can't get rid intentionally of the perception that somebody in this district is getting more than I am, then we're not going to be able to rally this community around, for example, a future operating referendum we may need to cover budget deficits that would cut to the very core of the type of education that we're at. So, when I'm considering my decision, the dollar impact weighs heavily. The impact on the Fridale families weigh heavily because of the, I think I said, 23 years of contributions that that staff has made, not just innovations at Fridale, but innovations elsewhere in the district and the obvious positive service that they've given to their students, the contributions of the students, the contributions of the family. At this point, I'm thinking that we have to move forward, because we are serving a larger number of students district-wide. And we have to figure out a way, especially after this pandemic, to work together as a district for the benefit of all of our students. And my commitment to the people watching or the people who are looking from Fridale, who wanted to go to Fridale, who felt that a Fridale model will be better, is my personal commitment that we will work to make sure that the middle school experience for every student is as valued and as looked fondly upon as the students who have spoken to us about Fridale.
Thank you, Director Nathan. I'm gonna go Director Amundson and then Director Barlow.
Thank you. Again, I think it's all been said, so I will just reiterate the important points. I think it's an inappropriate time to be considering this question, because I think it should be part of the larger budget-cutting process. If the only reason that we're looking at it is because of the costs, if it's not the only reason that we're looking at it, if we're also looking at it because of inequities perceived are real, then I think those inequities should be addressed, that closing it is not the way to approach it. Fixing it would be the way to approach it. And I think that the closure is permanent, whereas I don't think that we have had discussions about the budget-reduction process nor the possibility of a referendum, both of which could make this not a necessary reduction. So, I think it's the inappropriate process at the inappropriate time. Would Fridale need to be looked at for closure for financial reasons in the future? Yes, in which case, it would be a whole different discussion for me. So, again, I'm not in support of the way it's being done currently.
Director Barlow.
I'm thankful for the many hours we have spent discussing Fridale. I've learned a lot and it cost me to engage in some self-reflection. My family, my kids benefited from attending a district-wide option school in Anchorage, Alaska. It was called Northern Lights ABC School. Values, citizenship, high test scores. It was a school and remains to this day, the school, elementary school. In fact, they expanded elementary and middle school. And it was also lottery. So, we had six kids, not because of the choice school, mind you, but we had six kids. And because of the lottery, once, one in, all in. The Barrows, had I not moved to, we not moved to Rochester, could've tied that one school up for a couple of decades. I think that's important to understand. And I appreciate the fact that several of the current board members have disclosed that, yes, your children attended Fridale and benefited greatly from that. What I also have learned is Fridale is simply the name of the school. It was not the program. I aired early on thinking that Fridale was all about highly gifted, but I learned that, no, it's, yeah, that's a part of it, but not the real story. That may be the tip of the iceberg, but it was a small school experience, which was such an attraction, I'm sure, to parents, those students who were able to attend, both in the highly gifted program and those who weren't a part of the highly gifted program. And then, the staff, all the commitment and the ability to work with, if you will, parents that you know and have known, oh, yeah, you're Johnny's parents. And so, there's real benefit and value, PLC, you know. Those learning community dynamics are important. But I had hoped this evening, listening to staff from John Adams, as he spoke on two levels, one regarding the highly gifted program, the fidelity of highly gifted programming is continuing. It is not ending, it is continuing. And perhaps even becoming more than what it ever could've been. When I hear of the large school experience, John Adams, and how there's a sense of community that is being developed, I realize that community isn't just something that can only occur in a small school setting. It is a result of the commitment and passion of staff, parents, students, and community supports. So, I'm hopeful. And then, finally, the recommendation that occurred a couple of years ago, well, it's not foreshadowing a pandemic or budget reductions, but it was a direct result of a known, a known opportunity, should the voters approve, of a new middle school being built that could house those students who were attending Fridale, if parents so chose to allow their children to attend that new middle school. So, it was not done, if you will, as a result of trying to put a kibosh on a program or a concept. And so, I think it's important that even we as board members don't necessarily communicate our fears of the, the sky is falling. No, it is not. And I think we also have to be cautious to not suggest, oh, there's gonna be an exodus of students into our private schools or a loss of this or a loss. I mean, we are on a public school board. I take that serious myself. I believe we each do. And so, I think we have shared openly, candidly, honestly. I appreciate all of the emails that I'm sure many of my colleagues have received, conversations, and I would, for the students who are currently attending Fridale, I encourage you to view this as an opportunity, as well as the staff, the professional staff, who probably on a per capita, or if you were to assess and evaluate the overall skill set of even the staff, sometimes our best teachers sometimes our best teachers, and we never even got into this, could also the success of the model of Fidel also be a result of the high credentials of the staff who maybe was attracted to that school? I think perhaps so. And I just am thankful, I believe, in the public school model. I believe in our capacity as a district to re-event itself before there was a small school, middle school concept. We thrived. And I believe there will be additional opportunity to thrive. And one final comment regarding my worldview. It's, for me, not about the cost. And I don't think we should necessarily factor that in. But I think it is a matter of a plan that was provided to us a couple of years ago. And we can't continue to punt, if you will. You know, football season started this past weekend. We can't continue to kick the ball. It's time for us to strap the pads on and hit the field. And thank you.
Thank you, Director Barlow. Director Schlusner.
Kind of a tough one to go after Don there. But just to reiterate what a number of the other school board members have mentioned, and something else to think about as well is, you know, as Director Nathan had pointed out, I think there are a lot of good things that will come out of this that has given us as a school board and a school district, a lot of things to think about. As Director Amundsen had pointed out, like her, I do question the timing of the process. I understand the decision, but I do question the timing. And the need for a small school atmosphere. As Mr. Holm pointed out, as he was reviewing the plans for the new middle school, you know, the design team did take into account the attempt to come up with an atmosphere for the new middle school to have that small school-like atmosphere. You know, everybody understands the benefits of that. Nobody's ever questioned the benefits of a small school atmosphere or a small school in general. It's just become a question of cost and budget, which we are where we are today. So that's where we are.
So I will add my thoughts. I think we've done a lot of discussion, a lot of likely soul searching. I don't think this board takes, I think it's obvious, this board doesn't take any decision lightly. And as we moved into this discussion, the things that I started looking at about Fidel were cost and what it was costing us to have a small section of, a smaller middle school per student and the transportation costs. And then also, as I've mentioned previously, the free and reduced price lunch percentages and the minority percentages. And they're very difficult, I believe, to overcome in our district-wide option schools. I understand that if that's the problem, we should fix the problem. But I am so keenly aware that equity is on our minds each and every day. We have approved our core beliefs. And I really sat with those and thought about how I was going to make decisions on things this evening. And so for those reasons, it is more apparent to me that this model, well, is good for many, good for some, it's not good for all in terms of when we look at our 18,000 students. When I spoke to the superintendent about it this week, you know, we talked about the move we have made to social emotional learning. And as we heard earlier from our JM or JA teachers, you know, our teachers are working very hard to build those relationships and build those communities. And I think that in and of itself is going to get us farther than any size or shape of a middle school. The benefits of that are beyond what we could hope. So those are my thoughts that I will share. I see Director Marvin has raised her hand yet again. Go ahead.
I do. And I so value the comments of all those who have spoken. And we're hearing repeatedly what we value in middle schools. In addition to a wonderful academic program, in addition to having a highly gifted program for all students in every middle school, we value relationships, community, equity, belonging. And it shouldn't be that families have to choose one school to make that happen. That should be, and I think that's the increasing focus in all of our schools. So I understand the Fidel families who love their school. But I also understand the Willow Creek and Kellogg and JA families who love their schools. And I think the time has come for us to move on and repurpose Fidel for some of our special education students and other programs and to continue to work to ensure that every single middle school will provide that kind of community and relationship and belonging that our kids need. So at this point, I call the question.
Thank you, Director Marvin. Ms. Edgar, do you please call the roll?
Ms. Amundson. Nay. Mr. Barlow.
Aye.
Ms. Marvin.
Aye.
Ms. Nathan.
Aye.
Mr. Schlusner.
Aye.
Chair Seelinger.
Aye.
Ms. Workman. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, board members. Thank you for administrative staff for bearing with our questions and answering and getting us information. Thank you to our Fidel families and those across the district. We appreciate all that has gone on. I'm now going to move us on to 7.09, approval of revisions to the policies and procedures manual. This is a briefing item. I will call on Director Marvin. I'm not quite sure who's leading the charge here.
No, I'm doing this one. It's become obvious through the Minnesota School Board Association and others that we need a face covering policy. It's critically important that we talk about how our staff, students, and visitors to our building ensure the safety of others. There have been a couple, several different policies that discuss what qualifies as a face covering, when it must be worn, what specific exemptions are appropriate, and what the consequences are for those staff, students, or visitors who choose not to wear these face coverings. So we've looked at a few different options. And we have decided that the policy that our school district attorney and that firm in coalition with a number of districts, a number of different districts in Minnesota have provided with us, that that is the policy that we would like to adopt, partly because it's very specific in terms of what the consequences are. And our administration has told us that's the one that would be the most efficacious for this particular district. I see that Mr. Munoz has something to share.
Yeah, thank you, Jean. And I do apologize, we took another look at the policy today at Cabinet. And we did find one little adjustment we would like to recommend. And I will share my screen to bring that to your attention. So it's in Section 4.2. And what it talks about, it does give the temporary remove if they're indoors with students. And this is not our current practice. So and this is under the childcare section. Our recommendation would be to strike the entire number two and keep with our current practice, which is if you're indoors, you need to keep the mask on. So that's the only change that we would recommend to what's in the board docs.
Thank you, Superintendent. Is there any questions about the removal of that section? Yeah, Kathy.
Superintendent, that section of the mask policy was only relevant to the childcare, sorry, childcare and pre-kindergarten section. And all the other sections, that's not even in there as it exists.
Yeah, when talking, and Amy can jump in if she'd like. But in talking with Amy, our current practice in our preschool program and childcare program is we expect them to keep their mask on. So Amy, do you want to say a couple of words?
Sure, it's really an issue at the SAC program for school age care. We do require our staff to keep the mask on, even though they are working with the same pod of kids in the same room. And even though that section said temporary removal, we're thinking that that could confuse things for our staff. So we would be happy, since it is a childcare section, to just take that number two out of there. Keeping all the exceptions in the first part about eating or if your mask gets wet or something, they could take it off. But really, we want them to stay masked when they're in the room with the pod of students.
Thank you, Ms. Ike. Any other questions or clarifications on that? Yeah, go ahead, Jean.
No, and thank you, Amy and Mike for that. And the other piece of this is that we want to make very clear what are appropriate face coverings. And so in the section, and we talked about this in the policy committee, when it talks about gators, for instance, which for the most part have not been proven to be effective in terms of not being safe. We had some issues with that, so we wanted to modify that piece. So that and then the issue that Mike just brought up. Those would be the two changes to make in adopting this policy.
Director Marvin, can you, I'm not quite following the gator. And I don't, I can't open the policy because I'm out of juice in my other device. Is it a, thank you, Superintendent?
He knows how to do this so much better than I do.
You should have practiced last night. Okay.
Never mind.
Yeah, it's right here under Section 2, under definitions. The original policy that the legal counsel provided included, I think it was scarves, gators, and one other. Bandanas. Bandanas. And the policy committee thought we should remove those, which we did. So the documents in board docs had those removed already just for the reason that Kathy stated that they, I think it was Kathy, said that they're not as safe as a mask. So we did already remove those from that.
Okay, just a comment on that because I was at a building this week. And apparently Trout Unlimited has an approved gator that is, has been okayed by this whoever, I don't know, CDC. So there are some, at least one example of a gator that would meet the criteria. So I don't know how you want to handle that, but I thought I would bring it up.
Yeah, we, go ahead, Kathy.
Sorry, I'll go back to where this came from and that might put this conversation from Director Seelinger in context. So the original reason for bandanas, scarves, and net gators to not be on the recommended list is that the CDC recommends using two layers of fabric. And the scarves, the bandanas, and the net gators are ordinarily single layers of fabric. But now we have an evolution of the, of what is available in the marketplace, I believe, is what Director Seelinger is saying.
Yes. Yes, just for, that was my lesson this week. And I was.
And we, the policy committee did have that conversation. And we felt we didn't want to get in the business of checking gators and making sure there are two layers versus one layer. So it'd be easier to implement if we just said, you can't, you can't use them.
Okay. Director Amundson.
Yes, I have a question about the wording in the first paragraph that says this policy will remain in effect as long as the emergency executive order is in effect. So at that point, do we have to take action to take it off the books? And if another executive order gets issued, do we then have to throw it back on there or what happens? Because I can foresee, I can foresee the possibility that things will be coming and going unpredictably. You know, we could have waves of virus.
Someone want to speak to that? Policy committee people.
I will try to a little bit. I think so far, the governor's position has been with school districts is that we can make something more restrictive than the recommendation is. So if the executive order is rescinded or whatever, and if our COVID advisory team, our medical officials, and everybody else would make a recommendation that we should still keep our mask policy in place, then I would think that's what we would do. Otherwise, I don't know if it would be automatic or not. Jean, you want to weigh in?
No.
Or Kathy?
Go ahead.
I think the way Mick wrote the policy, because he says, while this executive order is in effect, once there's no longer an executive order, then the policy no longer is in effect. But we can, since tonight is just a briefing, we can follow up with Mick just to check for sure that that sentence that he has in there covers us so we don't have to come back and eliminate the policy.
If I could make a recommendation, maybe we could ask Mick about wording that says as long as an executive order is in effect regarding masks. Or something vague like that. But if we're stating a specific executive order, I do believe those executive orders are changing regularly in number, if nothing else. So I consider that a potential that we would have to keep updating.
Good question, Melissa. Thank you.
And I think this is a really good discussion. And because of this extraordinary time that we're in and we don't have precedent, I think we need to do what works for now and then sort of continue to evaluate, reevaluate, and revision how our policies need to work.
Director Nathan, thank you for being patient.
No, I was just here to answer questions. I'm not.
Oh, okay, got it. Director Amundson, do you have something else?
So I'm thinking that this is a policy that we want in place as soon as possible since it is affecting things that we're doing immediately. But do we still have a policy that says it needs to wait till the next meeting? So if we come with edits, does it still need to wait until the next meeting? So if we come with edits, does it still need to wait until the next meeting after that? Or can we change it between now and then and still vote on it at the next meeting? And I guess I'd also put out there, do we want it in place sooner so that we might have a special session?
What we talked about is having a business meeting prior to our September study session, having it approved. So I guess, and maybe Wendy needs to chime in here, but my understanding is if we approve taking out Section 2, and that's the only change we're making, and we all agreed that's what we're doing. And if we come back and Mick says we're good and we're not making the other changes, you could take action on that night. But I think you're correct, that if that night you say, no, we need to get rid of that executive order language, then that would have to be the briefing, and then we'd have to wait till the first October meeting to vote on it.
Correct. The changes that you've discussed tonight, those will be made, and they will be brought back as an action at the next meeting. But if you do any changes at the next meeting, then we'll have to move it again to the next meeting.
But if the problem is the executive order, we can implement the policy and then go through steps to amend the policy with the proper timeframe. So, you know, we're seeing the policy more often, but.
Right. But I think what we can do is, with the board's approval, we will check with Mick, and we'll find out what that language should be. We will update that language if he thinks that that's what we should do, or if we need to bring it back again with new executive orders. So why don't we wait till we find out from Mick if we can do that? Because then we'll update the language before we bring it back.
And Director Seelinger, also to Ms. Edgar, the policy 208 on development, adoption, and implementation of policies, this might also be something we could ask Mick about. There's a provision that says if a policy is modified with minor changes that do not affect the substance of the policy, or because of a legal change over which the school board has no control, the modified policy may be approved at one meeting at the discretion of the school board. So that might give us the leeway.
I'm only laughing, folks, because I can see Wendy over here looking up at the screen, and you guys can't see her, and she's nodding. So it's all very confusing here in the control room. Sorry for that. Melissa, do you have something else, other question? Okay. Anything else on the policy? Okay, we know what we're doing moving forward? Everybody's captured that? I kind of got lost there in all the, watching all the video, sorry.
So.
Go ahead.
I think our understanding is that this policy will move forward to be approved or not approved at our next school board meeting. It's been briefed, and then we need to wait until the next meeting for it to be formally approved.
When you say next school board meeting, you maybe don't mean the one in two weeks.
No.
It might mean.
We talked about having a business meeting before that at 4:45, because we would take care of that business. We would close that meeting and then go into the study session.
I just wanted to be clear, when Director Marvin said next meeting, what we meant by next meeting.
Has to be at our next business meeting, exactly.
But maybe not regularly scheduled business meetings.
Correct. Special session.
Special session, yeah.
Okay, we got it? You done? Put your hands down?
Okay. Good.
You got it?
Got it.
Going once? Julie, put your hand down if you're done? Okay, thanks, guys. Okay. 801, Future Discussions. We're working on the revised template list. Hope to get that back out in the next week, maybe. Had some questions. Still working on it, running out of time. The year is ticking by, folks, so. Director Marvin?
One of the issues on our parking lot was how the school board communicates with the community. We have the Community Engagement Committee who meets on a regular basis. And the focus in the recent past and going forward has been with student groups. But the issues are, how does that group work? And how do we, as a board, listen to, share information with, engage with, communicate with our greater community? So I'm hoping that a major focus of our study session will be, how do we, as a board, want to engage with the community in terms of social media, our own Facebook, or other platforms? How do we engage with the community as a board? Do we have generic listening sessions? And, and my recommendation is, how do we collaborate with Melissa Brant and the district's Family and Community Engagement Committee to listen to and engage with those marginalized communities who we're not hearing from too much? So I'm hoping, I'm hoping, that a major part of that discussion will be about not just the three-person Community Engagement Committee, but also the school board engagement with the community. And are we committed to working with our district in terms of their focus and their direction in terms of how they want to engage and with whom we really need to engage those marginalized communities we're not listening to or not hearing from?
Okay, thank you, Director Marvin. Director Workman?
I'm totally lost. Which meeting were you talking about?
Yeah, sorry, let me recap, because I have some other, this may help. So our September study session, on September 29th, we're going to be discussing, or talking about SROs, getting more information on that. Our October study session, on October 27th, we will be discussing engaging with the community stakeholders and communication protocols. I'm less worried for messaging.
I thought when she said our next meeting, and I was thinking, I just checked the meeting schedule, it was like, next time is SROs and.
And then, this is, so this is news, and this is why I'm, I just spoke with Wendy today. We will have to have on November 10th, a special session to canvas the votes. And the recommendation by Superintendent is to have a study session that evening on beginning work on attendance boundaries. So that's new information that just came in today as a recommendation for something that needs attention from administration.
Okay, and Director Workman, good question, because I absolutely did not make that clear. I was talking about October 27th. And, thank you, sure, Seelinger, for clearing that up, because I knew what I was thinking, and if the rest of you didn't, it's because I didn't see it, so.
Okay.
I thought maybe I was confused, but Jean, I'd be glad I can't read your mind.
No.
Okay, so anything else? We are keeping track of the future discussion list. We're getting things in as we can. Some things are coming, you know, are just bubbling to the top, and so we're going to have to deal with those. Anything else? Go ahead.
Well, since we're already planning out to November, I'd like to do some planning out into 2021. We've heard over the past few discussions about Fidel, and I heard it tonight from Director Marvin and Director Workman about the need to take this opportunity to look at our middle school instruction. So I'd like to propose a study session on middle school climate curriculum and instruction in January. And I think that that presentation from the JA staff tonight made it perfectly clear why this is a good idea, especially when Ian said, we're doing so many things that people just don't know about. And we're about to reshuffle the attendance boundaries. Now we're starting it in November. And that also causes a lot of anxiety for people who assumed that they were attending one middle school, and now they don't know anything about the middle school that they're going to be attending. So I think this is a really great opportunity to, as Director Marvin said a few meetings ago, give each middle school a microphone for what they are doing. And also, we've been talking a lot about the design and the benefits of the design of the new middle school that is going to allow things to happen in the new middle school because of its design. Well, those design features are not shared in our existing middle schools. So how do we assure equity among the instruction across all of our middle schools, balancing what might be possible in a new middle school with design, but maybe not possible in an existing middle school with design? So.
Sorry, that was really rude, but just short words, just a topic. We don't need to.
Yeah. I just wanted to put it down so that it was on tape, so I could remember what I said when we go back to talk about it in January.
And maybe it would be helpful, I'm sorry, Superintendent, to put you on the spot, about attendance boundaries. The initial discussions on attendance boundaries are going to be for when we come online in 2022, correct?
Yes, yes. Yeah, just a reminder, we made a commitment to the community that we would have boundaries decided by the fall of '21. So that's a little less than a year from today. The meeting that we have asked to put on the agenda is to meet with the consultant, because there's some parameters that we need to get from the board as we move forward in creating those boundaries. So we've already been in communication with the consultant. We're going to use the same one that the task force used. But he would like to sit down with the board and discuss some parameters that we need to keep in mind as we are doing boundary adjustments.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, Superintendent. Ms. Workman, and then Ms. Amundson, anything else?
Just to clarify, I completely support what Director Nathan said. I won't attempt to repeat all her words, because there were a lot of them. However, in the past, a board member will come up with an idea, does it automatically go into the parking lot? Or do we need to have some consensus on this? Because I fully support that. It would be nice to know if there are any other board members who are pursuing her recommendations.
Yeah, I believe that it is not a very clear process at this time. And so we do need to be careful that just because somebody has a good idea, if it will come forward, that's some of the discussion we do on our Monday meetings, is we talk about the future discussions and how they can maybe be in line. And so maybe it's not necessarily a whole study session, but maybe there are pieces of it that would be coming forward, of information coming forward naturally.
May I have a follow-up?
Yes.
So you're really, what I'm really hearing you say is that this is an idea, and that the executive committee is going to make a decision on behalf of the board as to what's going to be on a study session, as opposed to us, the board members, having input, or?
Well, I don't think we can vote on every item on the future discussions list, and so things keep moving. So yes, it may feel like we're making decisions, but we are the executive team of the board, and so we're going to make recommendations about when things come online.
I wasn't concerned about when so much as just if.
Well, if, also if, yes. Director Amundson?
Thanks. So I will add my vote, even though we're not voting, to having the discussion that Director Nathan was talking about. I would also put on the list, again, that we need to talk about the budget reduction process, and along with that, whether or not there's going to be an operating referendum that would conclude, and we would get the results of in time to apply that to the budget reduction process. And I would also remind Director Workman and others that there are other avenues for having things placed on the agenda that we're able to use should we not agree with the executive committee's facilitation.
Thank you, and I will concur with Director Amundson on the budget reduction process and everything else she said.
Those two items are on our future discussion list, so I don't think we need to repeat our future discussion list each time. But thank you. If there's nothing else?
I, sorry, there is. I do not see budget reduction or middle school on the parking lot list.
Yeah, that may be an administrative oversight. Trust me, everything's on the list. Superintendent?
Yes, I can tell you, we plan on bringing the start of that process to you. I do believe in one of the October meetings. We looked at it today at Cabinet. John looked at when the budget has to be approved, and we walked backwards, and October is when we need to start having that first conversation with the board. So you will get that conversation, not in a study session, but at a regular board meeting.
Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Mr. Carlson. If there's nothing else, board members, I will adjourn this meeting at 10:33 PM.